Number 17, 2025 Board of Commissioners Business Meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. Officer Fahem, do you mind leading us? Dana, will you please do the roll call?
Rebecca Moody, Vice President.
Here.
Ms. Hall, Commissioner.
Here.
Ms. McNaney, Commissioner.
Here.
Gregory Mall, Commissioner.
Here.
Sandra Zedell, Township Manager.
Here.
Megan Hurst, Assistant Township Manager.
Here.
Lauren Gallagher, Township Solicitor.
Here.
Nick Cross, Township Engineer.
Here.
David Duffy, Chief of Police. Brian Shapiro, Finance Director.
Got it.
And David Conroy, Doning Officer. And it is noted that Catherine Carter.
Thank you. For item number four, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. We are honoring one of our police officers this evening. Officer Abdounoir Fahem has served in our police department for five years. And I'd like to start by sharing a few words that the chief shared with me about Officer Fahem. Officer Fahem is the most proactive officer in the department. He leads us in traffic stops, DUI, and drug arrests. His ability to speak several languages has proven to be valuable countless times in the performance of his duty. Officer Fahem is one of two members of the newly formed Traffic Safety Unit and serves as a field training officer. We look forward to many more years working with Officer Fahem. And I just wanted to add that he really is a wonderful asset to our police department. And I think that's because he takes his role as a police officer very seriously. And he has an immense gratitude for being given the opportunity to serve as a police officer in our township. He really channels that appreciation and respect for the role into all he does as a police officer. And that really makes all the difference. So I would like to invite him to come up and shake all of our hands. And I would like to invite all of you to join me in a round of applause for him.[1102.53][1102.53](applause)
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, have there been any public, I'm sorry, any announcement of executive session?
The board did meet an executive session earlier this evening to discuss matters of potential litigation and personnel.
Thank you. For item number six, for public comment, for those who were able to come in and sign up early, we did have two sign-in sheets. One for general comments and one specifically related to the conditional use application 1500 Pembroke Parkway. So for the item number six here, I have public comments for anyone who is not planning on making a comment related to Pembroke Parkway, just to try to speed up the meeting here. So first, on public comment, we have Fred Hankin.
Good evening. I just had a follow-up question to the last meeting we had last Monday. It had to do with the resurfacing of the pickup hall in Tens Courts. And there was a big discussion about how the cost had gone up so much in the last, I guess you had to bid it for 200-something thousand, it went up to 400. There was a lot of discussion about the cost and can we afford it, so forth and so on. So my question is, did, how many bids did we receive as a township for that work?
The no bids were received. It's just a budget estimate at this time. So we got quotes, we looked at historical data quotes from one vendor. But when we actually do the project, not just budget for it, we will look at bids, look at contractors. I can guarantee we're going to go out to bid because we can also use Co-Stars or Sourcewell.
Okay.
If we use those, it's more of the companies tell us the price and we can negotiate.
It's possible it could go out to rebid is what I'm.
It's possible it could come in cheaper than budget.
Okay, that was kind of my, because I know everyone in the room was shocked to hear.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's a well worth project. It was just the cost. I know everyone in the room, I'm looking to Greg because he writes low.
Yeah, we'll continue to try to get the best price we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to number seven, the public hearing, 1500 Pembroke Parkway. I'll turn this over to Solicitor Gallagher.
Thank you. And I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing this evening.
Motion.
We have a motion. Could we have a second? A motion and a second? All in favor?
Thank you. As everybody can see this evening, we have a court reporter here. So I'm going to do my best to not talk too fast, but slow me down if I talk too fast. This is a conditional use hearing related to an application filed by Upper Gwinnett Family Apartments LLC. The application relates to property located at 1500 Pembroke Parkway and an adjacent parcel without address, both located in Upper Gwinnett Township, PA. Tax parcel numbers 5600-013-03009 and 5600-013-07005. The applicant is requesting conditional use for a multifamily residential development consisting of 60 residential units, parking, stormwater management, and related improvements and amenities as set forth in the plans submitted with the application. The property is located within the TOD 2 Transit Oriented Overlay District 2. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a court reporter here this evening. So we would ask that only one person talk at a time so that she can make sure she gets everything down. All comments and questions must be asked from the microphone. Shouting out from the audience will not be permitted. We do have people watching this evening on video as well. And again, we do have a court reporter, so I would ask that everyone comply with that. This public hearing is related to the conditional use only, not the land development. I'm going to mark some exhibits. T1 will be a copy of the conditional use application and plan set. T2 will be a copy of the proof of publication, which ran on November 5th and November 10th. We did receive the affidavit of publication earlier this morning, so that will be substituted for the proof that was in the agenda. T3 will be a copy of the Township Engineer Review Letter dated November 3rd, 2025. T4 will be a copy of the Township Traffic Engineer Review Letter dated October 29th, 2025. T5 will be a copy of the proof of posting. And T6 will be a copy of the proof of the neighbor notification. The applicant is represented by Joseph Clement this evening. Mr. Clement, do you have any exhibits you'd like to mark before we get started?
Thank you. Just one, we had a slide deck that we had provided earlier to the township. It's 21 slides and a PowerPoint presentation. We'd like to have that marked as A1, please.
It'll be marked as A1. Everyone is going to have the opportunity to make public comment at the conclusion of the public hearing this evening. There are a number of individuals present. This evening, we'll go through the procedures for public comment versus party status. Party status is available to those that can establish standing to participate in the public hearing. If granted, party status allows a person to cross-examine witnesses, offer evidence, things of that nature. You do not need party status to make comment about your opinion on the application. Party status allows you to become a party to the hearing. With regard to public comment, each person will be able to permit, will be permitted to make public comment once this evening. We did have a number of people submit a request to be granted party status, so we'll address each one in turn. If based on my explanation, you do not, you no longer wish to assert party status but would like to make public comment, please just let us know when your name is called. The first request for party status we got was from Hillary Devlin, 732 Jackson Street. Is Devlin present this evening?
I do. Hillary Devlin.
Can you spell your last name for her?
D is in David, E, D is in Victor, L-I-N.
And the request that we got indicated that your address was 732 Jackson Street, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you receive the neighbor notification for this evening's hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Clement? Make sure you use the microphone. That goes for you, too. I think we have an extra.
Should we sit at this table? Would that be more appropriate, a little easier for folks?
There's one seat extra in the front row on the other side, sir. Right, front row on this side.
It looks like we still do have one seat available front left, if anyone wants that.
Corner seat.
Anyone from the best people want to come and sit?
And Mr. Clement, just to bring us back, I believe you said that you have no objection to Ms. Devlin asserting party status this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
My recommendation would be that Ms. Devlin be accepted and granted party status. Are there no objections? Next name on the list was Fred Hankin of 802 Clover Drive.
I do. Fred Hankin.
I'm here representing three individuals who have seen the party status. Fred is one of them, and there are two more. I don't have the word, I would like to give it to you. I can name the three individuals. I'm here representing Fred, Mr. Carl Smith, and Teresa Price. They're all residents in the municipality. They've all requested party status in the procedure that the board did lay out. And given the size and scope of this proposal, I think they're all within the relative vicinity that they would be aggrieved parties as defined by Pennsylvania.
Mr. Hankin, did you receive the neighbor notification of tonight's hearing?
No, I did not.
And did counsel, I don't know if you want to bring up your other clients' reference?
Sure. Carl?
Teresa.
Carl Smith, S-M-I-T-H. The Y, it's an I.
And Mr. Smith, did you receive the neighbor notification for this evening's hearing?
No.
And just remember, we can't talk at the same time. It makes our job really hard.
My name is Teresa. Yes. Teresa Price, E-R-I-C.
And Ms. Price, did you receive the notification of this evening's hearing in the mail?
Yes, I did.
So Mr. Hankin and Mr. Smith did not receive the neighbor notification indicating they are not within the 500-foot notice requirement of the township ordinance. Ms. Price did. Mr. Clement, any objections to any of these?
Not to Ms. Price, but the other two, yes. We object to them being granted party status based on the fact that they did not receive the notice and not within the 500.
Are there any other basis to assert your client's rights will be affected by the application?
Yes, definitely is. Again, my clients, my clients are within the
Again, my clients are within the municipality. They do live, and I can bring each one of them up to detail exactly the proximity and how far they are. But there certainly is no requirement in Pennsylvania law that 500 feet, again, given this is not a little corner store, this is a large massive development that will impact likely the whole community. There's also case law, plenty of case law out there that people even in adjacent municipalities, again, given the unique facts of each case, would have standing to pursue this. They have also procedurally participated in the planning commission and numerous meetings over the last three years with regard to this project from its inception to now, and they've been very vested in their community. So I think they clearly should be granted party status.
My recommendation would be that Ms. Price is granted party status, but that Mr. Hankin and Mr. Smith are not granted party status, unless there are any objections from the board. Ms. Price will have party status, Mr. Hankin and Mr. Smith will not.
We would, for the record, would like to lodge a formal objection to Mr. Smith and Mr. Hankin not being granted party status.
Understood.
Thank you.
Next on the list was Errol Jacob.
I do. V is in Victor, I-R-A-F, last name Jacob, J-A-C-O.
And Mr. Jacob, your party status form indicated that you reside at 229 State Street, is that correct?
Correct.
And did you receive the mailed notice of this evening's hearing?
No.
Mr. Clement?
Same objection as previously lodged.
Mr. Jacob, do you have any other basis to assert that your rights will be affected by the application?
I'm about 800 feet away from place.
You're at 229 State Street?
Correct. It's going to affect me and my neighborhood.
So the... When I looked at this earlier, it indicated it was 1.8 miles from 1500 Pembroke Parkway.
No, it's not. You can check on that again.
But you did not receive the notice this evening?
No, I didn't.
My recommendation would be that Mr. Jacob is not granted party status this evening. There are no objections from the board? Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Next up is Mary Benedetto at 753 Jackson Street. I also have Carol Benedetto from the same address.
It's Martin Benedetto.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, I received... I do. Martin Benedetto, B-E-N-E-D-E-T-T-O.
And Mr. Benedetto, did you receive the mailed notice of this evening's hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
No objection.
He'll be granted party... I would recommend that we grant party status this evening, unless there's any objections from the board. He'll be granted party status this evening.
I didn't understand the words you said. What did you just say?
Going through to determine whether or not you're entitled to party status, which as I explained, allows you to participate in the hearing, cross-examine witnesses, offer evidence. Board has approved your request for party status.
Okay.
And Carol Benedetto, I'm going to make an assumption is your wife?
It's my wife, yeah.
Is she going to be asserting separate party status? She had filled out a form, but if you're participating together, that's fine.
We're together.
I assume Mr. Clement has no objection to that.
No objection.
Linda Smith?
Linda Smith?
And Ms. Smith, you had indicated on your form that you reside at 815 Macintosh Way?
Correct.
Did you receive the mailed notice of this evening's hearing?
No, I did not.
Are there any other basis to assert your rights will be affected by this evening's application?
I'm a little confused about that question. How would my rights be affected?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I'm unable to speak, so that's part of my right as a township resident.
Every resident and non-resident is permitted to offer public comment. This is for party status to participate in the application. There is a legal standard that is required to be met in order to be granted party status.
I understand. I'm not 500 feet from the property.
Mr. Clement?
Same objection as lodged to Mr. Smith.
My recommendation would be that this petition for party status be, would not be granted, unless there's any objections from the board. Next on the list is Joseph Devlin, also of 732 Jackson Street. I believe our first party status. Ms. Devlin is waving from the back. Mr. Devlin, are you here this evening? Please.
He was not able to be here tonight.
So then you'll...
So, yes.
Thank you.
Same household.
Is there anyone else present this evening that would like to take party status in this evening's application? Again, everyone will have the opportunity to offer public comment. This is for party status only. Sir?
I do. Justin Shepherd Griffith. That would be G-R-I-F-F-I-T-H. I do reside in 500 feet of above said project, and I did receive notification of tonight's.
I'm sorry, what was your address?
737 Jackson Street.
Mr. Clement?
No objection.
My recommendation would be that Mr. Griffith be granted party status this evening, unless there's any objections from the board.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to assert party status in this evening's application? I see no hand. Mr. Clement, you may proceed with the conditional use hearing. We would like to try to keep this orderly, so we're going to ask you to present your witnesses one by one, rather than back and forth to witnesses. We'll have each of your witnesses sworn, and then following their testimony, they'll be made available for questions from the board or township staff, and then questions from anyone that was granted party status. Sound okay?
Sounds perfect, thank you. Just one question. Should we have... We do have a bunch of folks with us here this evening, the design team for this project. Would it make sense to have them qualified as experts first at each, at each opportunity for each witness?
Whichever is your preference.
I'd like to do that all at once, if I may.
Certainly.
So I do have to my right Ed Spitel. He's the authorized representative of the applicant. Over my left shoulder are most of the design team. I'd like to have just each one of them come up, be sworn in, and then we can go through their qualifications quickly. And then we'll have them sit down, and that'll go through the presentation he has prepared. And then at the end, we'll have them all, you know, come up with his comments.
Certainly. And while you're gathering your witnesses, do you have CV?
We do have CV, yes.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Clement, who are we starting with?
So this is Michael. Michael, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, Michael Donovan, principal owner of Donovan Architects. I've been owner of the company for almost 20 years. I hold degrees from Temple and Drexel, and I've been accepted as an expert witness before this board before. I've spoken on this project.
Marcus CV is A2.
Thank you. And Mr. Donovan, you are the design architect for this particular project, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you want to do one by one, or do... We should probably do one by one. Yes, he should be sworn in.
We'll do one by one, and probably Michael should come back.
Mr. Donovan, we're going to have you sworn in. Apologies, there was paperwork.
I do. Yes.
Mr. Donovan, if you can stay there.
Sure.
I assume you would give the same statements that Dave gave a few minutes ago if we re-asked you those questions?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Ms. Devlin, do you have any questions regarding Mr. Donovan's qualifications? You're going to need to come up to the microphone.
In regards to architecture, I do not have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Benedetto, in regards to Mr. Donovan's qualification, you have to come up to the microphone. No?
No.
Thank you. Counsel, I apologize. I did not jot down your last name. Thank you. And on behalf of Ms. Price, do you have any questions for Mr. Donovan based upon his qualifications?
I guess my question would be, what is he being... Is he... This is her expert testimony. What is he an expert in, and what is he going to proffer? What opinion is he going to elicit?
He's offered as an expert in architecture.
Just in architecture in general?
Yes.
Okay. And he's going to be listening expert opinions in the realm of general architecture?
Yes.
Okay.
If required.
Okay. That's all. That's all I have.
And Mr. Griffith? Any questions or objections to Mr. Donovan's qualification?
I do not at this time.
Thank you. Not hearing any objections, my recommendation would be that Mr. Donovan is qualified as an expert in architecture.
Thank you. Next, we have Cory.
I do. Certainly, it's Cory, C-O-R-E-Y, last name Chase, C-H-A-S-E.
I'm going to mark Mr. Chase's CV as A3.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Court Chase, Principal with Dynamic Traffic, Licensed Professional Engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, licensed in seven other states, Bachelor's of Science degree in Civil Engineering from University of Massachusetts, and qualified as an expert in traffic engineering before over 200 municipalities throughout the region.
Solicitor Gallagher, we're looking to qualify Cory as an expert traffic engineer.
Ms. Devlin, any questions for Mr. Chase or objections to his qualifications as a traffic engineer?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Benedetto, any objections to Mr. Chase or questions regarding his qualifications as a traffic engineer? Got to come up to the microphone.
Not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Papa, on behalf of Ms. Price, any questions or objections to Mr. Chase being qualified as a traffic engineer? You also have to come up to the microphone. Got people at home?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Griffith, any questions or objections to Mr. Chase being qualified as a traffic engineer?
At this time, I have no objections and no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. With that, my recommendation would be that Mr. Chase be qualified as a traffic engineer.
Thank you. Next up would be Dave Gibbons. And we're looking to qualify Mr. Gibbons as an expert in civil engineering and in land.
We'll mark his CV as Exhibit A4.
I do. Sure, David Gibbons, G-I-B-B-O-N-S, Boy. Senior Principal Engineer with Howell Engineering, where I've been working for the past 21 years. I have a degree in civil engineering from Pennsylvania State University. For the past 21 years, I've been focused on the design and permitting of subdivision land development projects throughout southeastern Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Ms. Devlin, any objections or questions for Mr. Gibbons for his qualifications as a civil engineer and land planner?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Devlin. Mr. Benedetto? We have two more after this, if you want to stay closer, Mr. Benedetto.
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Benedetto. Mr. Papa, on behalf of Ms. Price, any questions or objections to Mr. Gibbons' qualifications?
Yes. If I could... So, Mr. Gibbons, a few questions for you. Your education, again, I don't have your CV. Poppy's coming. Just one, that's okay.
Mr. Papa, if you want to use...
Oh, no, that's okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Gibbons, you're going to have to share the microphone.
Okay. So, Mr. Gibbons, your education here, you're a professional engineer? Sorry, we're sharing.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay, and... Do you have any, I mean, do you have any specialized education in land use?
Not specifically.
Okay. And have you ever served on a zoning board or served as a zoning officer in any municipality?
I have not, but I've testified for zoning many times.
Okay. So you're basically familiar with zoning?
Zoning engineering, stormwater management, erosion control, or ham and...
Sure, sure. Thank you. Those are my only questions for Mr. Gibbons. I don't have a problem with him being as an engineer. I do not think he would qualify as an expert in land use planning. There isn't any specialized training in land use planning. I understand he has testified as an engineer, his expertise in engineering. But land use planning is its whole separate subset of knowledge. I've been a zoning solicitor about 20 years. I do have land use planning folks that have come in, and it is a very specialized field. Usually, it's somebody who has served in that role, say, as a zoning officer somewhere. So I think he clearly does not have that reasonable pretension of expert knowledge when it comes to land use planning. So we would object to him being qualified as a land use planning expert, and we would certainly object to any opinion he would proffer with regard to land use planning in this matter.
Perhaps I can...
Sure, I think I can clear this up.
Land use, not land use planning. So qualified, we're asking to qualify Mr. Gibbons as an expert in civil engineering and land use.
That's, that just seems to me a distinction without a difference. I don't know the difference between land use and land use planning. Yeah, I just, I don't think he would qualify as an expert in that field. He's certainly a trained engineer, so...
No.
Thank you, Mr. Papa.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffith, any questions for Mr. Gibbons or objections to his qualifications? An expert in civil engineering and land. I apologize. I think I added the planning on.
Other than what Mr. Paper just said, I have no objection or questions. Thank you.
My recommendation would be that Mr. Gibbons be qualified as an expert in civil engineering and land use. Any objections from the board? Mr. Clement?
Yes, we have Mike... Mike Waggoner. Mike is a landscape architect. We would like to have him qualified as an expert in landscape architecture.
Michael Waggoner, W-A-G-O-N-E-R. I'm a landscape architect, led by the state of Pensavent for the last 19 years. I've worked in the industry since the early 90s. My background is from Temple University, where I have degrees in horticulture. I have specialized in reforestation, repairing corridors, and also northeastern woodland plants. I've sat on my planning commission in my township for the last 18 years. I am a trail committee member. I'm also a liaison for Greenways in the Chester County area. And we, and I work with Brandywine Conservancy, William Penn Foundation when it comes to reforestation projects. Thank you.
And we're going to mark Mr. Waggoner's CV as A5. Ms. Devlin, any objections to Mr. Waggoner's qualifications or questions for him?
I do not.
Thank you. Mr. Benedetto, any objections to Mr. Waggoner's qualifications or any questions?
Right now.
Mr. Papa, on behalf of Ms. Price?
I have no objections to being qualified as a... I have no objections to being qualified as an expert landscape architect.
Architecture.
Thank you.
And Mr. Griffith, any objections or questions for Mr. Waggoner as a landscape architect?
At this time, I have no objections or questions.
My recommendation would be that Mr. Waggoner be accepted as an architect expert.
Last but certainly not, certainly not least, Fred Ebert, Fred, we'd like to have qualified as a sanitary sewer engineer. And an expert in sanitary sewer engineering.
I do. Frederick Ebert, E-B-E-R-T. I am the President of Ebert Engineering, we represent about 30 municipalities. I have a Bachelor of Science Degree in Civil Engineering from Lafayette College. I've been a licensed engineer for over 20 years, have been practicing for more than 30 years. In addition to representing approximately 30 municipalities in water and wastewater, We also represent approximately 50 developers in water and wastewater planning, Sewer facilities planning, design, permitting, and then actually construction.
Ms. Devlin, any objections to Mr. Ebert's qualifications or any questions for him being offered as, Mr. Clement, who refreshed my recollection, civic qualification?
An expert in sanitary sewer engineering.
Not at this time, thank you, Ms. Devlin. Mr. Benedetto, this is our last expert. Any objection to Mr. Ebert's qualifications or any questions for him being qualified as an expert in sanitary sewer engineering?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Papa, on behalf of Ms. Price, any objection to Mr. Ebert's qualifications or any questions for his being qualified as an expert in sanitary sewer engineering?
Objection.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, any objections to Mr. Ebert's qualifications or any questions regarding proffer as an expert in sanitary sewer engineering?
No objections or questions at this time.
Thank you. My recommendation would be that Mr. Ebert be qualified as an expert in sanitary sewer engineering. Mr. Clement, your experts will be accepted as such. But I would note that for Mr. Gibbons, that the qualification as an expert in land use is subject to connection in testimony.
Thank you. At this time, what I'd like to do is have Ed sworn in, I don't think he's sworn in yet. And then Ed will go through this PowerPoint presentation that we have prepared this evening. And at, when we get to the site civil plans, we'll then have our experts start to testify as well.
Yes, I do. Sure, Edmund Spital, S-P as in Paul, E-I-T-E-L. Welcome. Good evening, everyone, thank you for having us, I'm Ed Spital with the Walters Group. Brief history, very brief history about the Walters Group and myself personally. We are a real estate development company with a specific focus in the development of workforce, affordable housing. We have approximately 2,000 units in various stages of operation and development in New Jersey. I have been with the company for almost 22 years now, about 17 of those years focused specifically on workforce housing development. How do I change this over? This is just a rendering of, a rendered perspective of the entrance of the community, so because it's PowerPoint, or because it's my apologies. Right, yeah. Okay. All right, let's try. Sorry about that. This was the entire development team who was just qualified, I think we can probably move to the next slide on that. As I had said, this is just a quick roster of all of our relevant workforce housing development in the state of New Jersey. Again, approximately 2,000 units, and started in about 2008. Go to the next slide. This is an aerial of the site development area, a little more zoomed out than that. Of importance with this slide is in the left-hand portion, about midway up, you'll see the site location. And then the other import, it's in the, as everyone is aware, the TOD2 zone. What you'll see about dead center of the screen is the train station, which is within a half a mile walking distance of the subject site. And that's pretty much it to cover on this slide. What you're looking at here is a site plan that has some color to it, we're going to be showing a few more of these as we move on. The important things to note here are, one is the unit count, which is 60 units. It's a mixture of one, two, and three bedroom units. The ones being 20, 27 one-bedroom units, 22 two-bedroom units, 13 three-bedroom units. The parking count is almost a two-to-one ratio at 117 spaces. You see six total residential buildings, one of them has a clubhouse appended to it. You'll see that the parking is adequately spread out through the site. Next to the, adjacent to the clubhouse, which is kind of, again, dead center of this screen. Just to the top of that, you'll see a tot lot that is associated with our clubhouse. And on the right side of the screen, you'll see another amenity, which is our half-basketball court. And finally, the other relevant amenity, I would say, is toward the top left, which is our centralized refuse and recycling area. Okay, go to the next one, please. What you're looking at here are
I completely understand, I completely understand the rules of evidence are relaxed when it comes to zoning proceedings. But I don't, I mean, a witness has to respond to questions. I believe this witness is just, he's giving a presentation, he's giving a speech, but I think we have to elicit actual questions and not just kind of let them roll nonstop. So my objection would be, this is a narrative, this calls for a narrative, and I think there has to be questions that produce evidence, not just a speech.
Sustained the objection.
Thank you.
All right, Ed, we're going to go about this a little differently. Ed, could you describe for us what's on slide six?
Yes, Joe, I'd be happy to. Slide six is a slide showing our typical community amenities, which include things such as a half-basketball court, a clubhouse, a trash and recycling enclosure, a tot lot, and some amenities that are otherwise associated with a clubhouse facility.
Is there anything else you'd like to testify about with respect to this particular slide?
No, thank you.
Move to the next slide, please. And Ed, on slide number, I believe this is seven, could you just describe for us what's pictured here?
Certainly. These are typical community amenities that are generally on the interior, such as the inside of our clubhouse space, our fitness area, the club room, the, our computer workstation, and we wanted to highlight that every unit has in-unit washers and dryers.
Is there anything else you'd like to testify about with respect to this slide?
No, thank you.
And Mr. Spital, this is now slide eight, which is, I believe, a rendering, could you just describe for us what that is?
Sure. This is a color-rendered streetscape image of the, of the site, shown with the proposed landscaping from the, from Penbrook Parkway.
Thank you. Anything else with respect to this slide?
No, thank you.
And on slide nine, Mr. Spital, this is another rendering, could you just describe for us what this is?
Sure, this one is just taking more interior to the site. Again, shows the resident, the multifamily buildings, a mix of the different construction materials and landscaping.
Anything else you'd like to say with respect to slide nine?
No.
On slide 10, could you just describe for us what is depicted here?
Sure, this was an exhibit that we had done in a prior presentation, and this was to show the proximity of our buildings to some of the, our nearest neighbors and which we'll get into, I think, with some of our other testimony, but the point, what will be discussed at that time will be, you know, the distance between them, the landscaping, the reforestation, and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Spital, anything else with slide number 10?
No.
On slide 11, there is a chart of community characteristics, could you describe for us what those are?
Sure, this is also a list that's been in many of our previous presentations here. It just shows the income ranges based on the bedroom sizes. It has the rents based on those bedroom sizes and income levels, and, you know, just the distribution of those things.
Anything else with respect to slide number 11?
No.
No.
Slide 12, rather, is just a typical floor and unit plan introduction, could you go to slide 13, please? Mr. Spital, again, there's a, I'll call it a rendering on the screen. Slide 13, could you just describe for us very briefly what that is?
Sure, this and a few of the slides after just show a few of the unit plans, mixture of ones, twos, and threes, generally how they're laid out. Of importance to note is, you know, the bathroom locations, the nice living areas, the kitchen sizes. And every unit has, what you'll see in the elevations, a porch or a patio.
And slide 14, if you will, Mr. Spital, again, that's a typical rendering, correct?
Sure, that, this one's just from the second floor perspective, but generally the same as the previous slide.
And with respect to slide number 15, if we move on to that, again, this is the third floor plan, correct?
That's the third floor plan, which shows some of the three-bedroom units, where that third bedroom is up on the third floor with a bathroom.
Thank you, Mr. Spital, then turning to slide 16, we have a one-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom unit, and a three-bedroom flat unit, these are your typical flat units.
Correct, these are typical flat units, and, you know, they're representative of some of the various units within the community.
Mr. Spital, is there anything else you would like to testify with respect to this evening?
Not at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
That'll conclude my directive, Mr. Spital.
Thank you, does the board have any questions? Can you reiterate how many parking spaces there were, I'm sorry, I didn't write fast enough.
Sure, 117.
One additional question regarding parking, I see recently you're seeking a waiver with regard to the number of parking spaces before there's a parking island, if I'm not mistaken, and I was wondering if a parking configuration takes into consideration also handicap spaces as well?
It does, sir, we'll have the traffic engineer testify a little bit more directly about those types of things. The waivers, we could address during the land development portion of this evening's meeting as well. Thank you.
I just have one about the community characteristics, are those numbers current with the low-income housing tax credit program?
Yes, those are the 2025 published numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Is this, I don't know if this is a better question, better asked at the land use or perhaps this particular portion, but are these same credits, the same program, that has just been expanded in President Donald Trump's one big beautiful bill act? I believe, if I'm not mistaken, in that bill, he's actually just expanded the credits for this very program, has lowered some of the bonding threshold, is that correct, that this is actually part of the President's big beautiful bill?
Yes, that, this is part of that program, which, as you noted, has been expanded under that bill.
Ms. Devlin, any questions for this witness?
I do have a few questions, one is, will this community have for, lack of a better word, an HOA type of rules of governance for residing within this property? And that would contribute to how people behave or maintain their properties that they own in this community?
We, so what I failed to mention earlier, we do, we handle the development, the construction, and the management. We do all of those functions under one roof, so we are the owner, or will be the owner of this, we are the owner of this community. All of the communities that we showed on that list, we own and manage those ourselves. So to answer your question, we will have onsite property maintenance staff, property management, and 24/7 emergency number in case something goes wrong, but we own the community, we manage it, these are our residents that we qualify for the units.
I understand, I'm talking more about the behaviors of the residents and people living there. I've lived in condo communities before, and we had rules that we had to abide by in terms of how we maintained our property and even behaviors on that property. Will there be a set of governing rules in that regard for this community?
Sure, sure, we have, we have a lease that spells out many of those rules. For example, just one of those, which I think everyone could appreciate is the porches and balconies that I mentioned, they're a nice feature that we incorporate, but they can look really unsightly when someone has their bikes hanging out on them or towels hanging over them. So these are the types of things that we put into our lease and tightly manage, so we manage it very tightly.
Where, are there, will there be criminal background checks?
Absolutely.
On people who apply to be approved? And will people be turned away for criminal arrests or?
There will be criminal background checks on.
Mr. Spital, if you can let her finish her question, so that we can make this nice lady's job easier.
That's okay, any criminal activity or indictments against somebody would that way in and be a reason to deter someone from living at this property?
Yes, we do conduct criminal background checks. We do it as well as our third-party qualifying company. Anyone with a criminal background within a certain period of time and certain level of crime are not allowed to, are not allowed to live here, they get thrown off the list. There's also a Megan's Law search that's run also on prospective tenants.
And then lastly, what is the attraction for this community to be placed in an industrial park where, as a family, being surrounded by a hotel and businesses and large lighting that already spills over to my front door? What is the attraction for a community like this to be put in such a non-residential environment? On the predominant one side of it?
What we find attractive about the community is that it's, it's walkable to the train station, that Upper Gwinnett is a very nice town. That land is not easy to find, available land is not easy to find in Upper Gwinnett. We thought it was a consistent land use with the apartments that are on the other side of Church Road. And we're confident that we'll have, we'll have no problem attracting residents here.
Okay. That's all my questions at this moment. Thank you. Mr. Benedetto?
I'd like to ask you, is there going to be someone at that property all the time paying attention to what's going on?
I'm not certain if we will have a property manager there 24/7, we will have, there will be property management staff there at least during business hours. I should mention that we also have security cameras everywhere. And in many towns, and this town would be one of them, where we're more than willing to share those cameras and give access to your where we're more than willing to share those cameras and give access to your police department.
You're on the front side of this proposed property that you're talking about. Nothing but tractor trailers. Do you guys pay attention to that? How are you going to get around that?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
Tractor trailers right there now. What, you're going to build this building right next to the tractor trailers?
I understand that there are trailers on the lot that's adjacent. And yes, we plan to construct the community pursuant to the plan that's behind you.
What kind of environment is that going to be?
I, yeah, I, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Papo, on behalf of Ms. Price?
Just to clarify, the applicant here, we have the Walters Group, which that's the original application. Now we have a distinct LLC that has filed the application. Just to clarify, who the applicant is? Sounds like a stupid question.
My counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Walters Group is kind of the umbrella name for our company and form single-purpose entities for each of these types of communities.
Okay. How many communities does the Walters Group have?
I'm going to say we have about two to three dozen in various stages of development, operation, and in the pipeline. So approximately 2,000 units.
Okay. So the Walters Group is the umbrella. How is the, how's the Walters Group organized? Is it a, is it a liability company? Is it a?
No, Jack, that has nothing to do with what we're here for.
Thanks, Miller. The identity of the actual applicant, I think, is relevant.
I believe that the question to be answered is owned by an LLC. The property is owned by Upper Gwinnett Family Apartments LLC.
Okay. So that is the applicant, not the Walters Group?
Correct.
Okay. Does the actual applicant, okay, so the Walters Group has, this actual applicant, this will be the first such development for this applicant, right?
Again, objection. This was already asked and answered. My client informed, or in response to a very similar question, has already stated that this is a single-purpose entity that is formed for this particular site.
Okay. That's fine. Now, is it the same management, though, same group, same folks running it?
Yes, it is.
And the, just a couple of questions. The structure of your management team, so onsite of this particular development, is there an onsite property manager?
Yes, there will be.
Do they reside on the property?
Sometimes they do, sometimes, and I'm not, I'm not certain that the property manager will live on this property. I would guess probably not.
Thank you. Nothing.
Mr. Griffith, do you have any questions for this witness?
I may ask, has Walters Group ever sold off any of these properties that they developed?
We've never once sold one of our affordable housing communities. No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clement, any redirect?
No. No redirect.
Other board questions for the witness? Mr. Spital, I believe you're done.
So if we could go back to, I guess, this slide 17? Okay, this one's, it's a little bit tough to make out, but in connection with this project, did you go through the township's zoning code?
I did.
And in doing so, do you familiarize yourself with TOD2 zoning criteria and the conditional use criteria in general?
I have.
What I'd like to do is just kind of walk through this plan a little bit. And it's your understanding, it's your professional opinion that this plan does in fact meet the conditional use criteria and the TOD2 criteria set forth in the code?
That's correct.
Mr. Papo, you got to be at the microphone.
Again, I'm objecting to this gentleman, while, again, he is an engineer. He's, my objection is he's not a qualified land use planner. I understand the court, the board made a different determination, but that's an objection that we're going to continue to have to any land use planning opinion on the meeting of this, of the code. Further, the code also, I mean, if you recall, there's numerous subjective determinations regarding suitability, not contrary to the public interest, things like that. And I don't think there's any foundation laid for this gentleman to make an opinion, certainly not an expert opinion, that, or any opinion, that right now, without this level or any foundation, that they comply with the conditional use ordinance just right out the bat.
Understood, Mr. Papo. And I under, and I do note your objection to his qualifications as a land expert. When I did indicate at the beginning of this was that that qualification was subject to connection from the testimony. So that determination is being held with regard. He's qualified as an expert in civil engineering. He has not been offered as an expert on the Upper Gwinnett Township zoning code. Your objection is?
Thank you. Thank you. I guess my second objection would be that there's just no foundation that's been laid for him to go right in and say they comply with this, with this code. That's all.
Understood. I'm going to allow Mr. Clement to continue.
Okay. Thank you.
In general, when you are, well, let's start from the very beginning. Do you reveal, in your, as you're designing as a civil engineer, plans for land development, look at the zoning code?
Yes, absolutely.
And make a determination based on your review of the zoning code, whether or not a plan can comply with the code provisions?
We do. We look at things like area and bulk standards, allowed uses, things like that, like previous coverage, lot size, things of that nature.
And that's something that you have traditionally done for decades now?
That's correct.
So let's, looking at this, turning to the plan that's up on the screen right now, did you prepare this plan?
Yes, I did.
And it's hard to make out, it's hard to read, but on the top-left side, there's a, in fact, I think you've got a board.
Right.
Mr. Gibbons, this board that I've just laid down in front of both of us, this is the same plan as is being presented on the screen?
That's correct.
And if you could go through this for me, on the top-left corner, there's the building types and square footage. Could you just go through that for us?
Sure. So just to kind of summarize here, the first one is Building 1, residential building type unit?
Mr. Griffith, can you make your talk microphone?
All right.
It's juggling. This is a little bit of a juggling act.
And that, that has 12 units in that building. That Building 1 also contains the community building, which is on the northern, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the northern end of Building 1. Building 2 is the residential type A unit, which contains 10 units, living units. Building 3 is a residential type C unit, which also contains, Building 3 contains eight dwelling units. Building 4 is a residential type C building type, which also contains eight units. And then Building 5 and Building 6 are, what I would say, are more in the northern end of the site. Building 5 is a residential type A, which contains 10 units. Building 6 is a type E residential building, and that contains 12 units for a total of 60 dwelling units.
Mr. Gibbons, right to the right of the chart that you just read off of is another chart. Could you just describe for us generally what that chart presents?
Sure. That chart is listing the general square footage by the apartment types and the bedroom units. The table to the right of that lists the square footages of the community building.
Could you just go through the community building and the square footages that are listed in that chart?
I can, sure. So there is, there's net square footage and gross square footage. I'm just going to go through the gross square footages. We have the lobby, which is 316 square feet, community room, which is 995 square feet. There are two restrooms, each of about 64 to 65 square feet, a 235-square-foot maintenance room, two 15-square-foot mechanical closets, 368-square-foot reception, Office A and Office B of about 118 square feet each, and then a copy room, 55 square feet, and a 339-square-foot fitness room.
And, Mr. Gibbons, to the right, bottom right of the plan, there's a zoning data tabulation and some other information. Could you go through that for us as well?
Sure. That is the zoning data tabulation, which consists of the general information on the area and bulk standards. So we are in the LI Limited Industrial District, which falls under the TOD2 Transit-Oriented Overlay District 2. This, a byright use is a multiple-family dwelling.
And before we go, sorry, before we get too far along there, there's the, excuse me, TOD2 Transit-Oriented Overlay District 2 in that zoning data tabulation. The use regulations, as I see it here, and I'm just going to read this. If you could, just read these two things for me here. I think that's?
Section 195-21.1.B, which is the use regulations. Subsection 1 is multiple-family dwelling.
And that is what's permitted by conditional use under the TOD2, correct?
That's correct.
And then the next line, there's another section listed.
Sure. Section 195-21.1.C, development standards?
And those are the conditional use development standards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could you just go through those conditional use development standards, what's required and what's proposed?
I can. So we have the minimum gross tract area required is four acres. Proposed, we have 5.556 acres. The minimum gross tract width is 200 feet required. This property has 318 feet. The maximum density allowed is 11 units per acre. This project proposes 10.8 units per acre, which equates to 60 dwelling units. Maximum building coverage allowed on this property is 34.1%. Proposed is 13.47%. There is no maximum purpose coverage in this zoning district, but we listed on here is 48.58%. Minimum setbacks from external roads, right-ofways, parking would be 15 feet. That's not applicable to this project. And then 40 feet for buildings, which is also not applicable to the project. Minimum property line setbacks, parking 10 feet. We are proposing 11, a minimum of 11.1 feet. Minimum property line setbacks for buildings, 25 feet. We are proposing a minimum of 28 feet for this project. Also listed is minimum setback to residential zoning district adjacent to the property. 50 feet required, but is not applicable to this project. Maximum building height allowed is 35 feet. We are proposing to have less than 35-foot tall buildings. Minimum open space required is 20%. This project proposes 28.37%.
We'd already gone through parking, but there's a parking tabulation, too, that's just below the standards in the red. Could you just go through that for us, please?
I can. So the parking required is based on whether they are one bedroom units or two or greater units, bedroom units. So it's 1.4 spaces for a one-bedroom unit, 2.4 spaces for two or more bedrooms. That is requiring 117 parking spaces for this breakdown on this project. And there's 117 parking spaces proposed.
Mr. Gibbons, if you could just walk us through a couple of things on the site plan itself. I believe there is a minimum cartway width proposed throughout the site. Could you please describe that for us?
Sure. So there's a main access to this development off of Penbrook Parkway. As you noted, there is a minimum 26-foot-wide cartway width for this project, which we are meeting. As I just testified, there's 117 parking spaces provided throughout this project along those two access drives. There is a front, I would, what I would call the front portion of this project consists of Buildings 1, 2, 3, and 4. And then, as you head toward the back part of this property, there's this small wetlands crossing to reach the rear portion of the property, where there's two other buildings, Building 5 and Building 6.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Could you also go through just some of the site amenities that are on, that are depicted on this plan? The community room, the tot lot. We've talked about them, but could you just point them out for us?
Sure. So what I would say is probably generally in the center of this exhibit is the community building, which is on the northern end of Building 1. So it is attached to Building 1. To the north side of that, to the north side of the community building is a small seating area. And there's also a tot lot. Also noted earlier was at the rear portion of the site, on the far northern end, is the half-basketball court. And then toward the southern side of the site is the trash compactor and refuse area. Also throughout the site, there are bike racks and benches along certain sidewalks.
Mr. Gibbons, could you just describe the sidewalks that are throughout the community for us and point out their interconnectivity?
Sure. So there's, there's generally five-foot-wide sidewalks along all parking areas and driveways for this site, with the exception of, I guess, what I would say is on the north side of the small connector street in the middle of the project. But it does provide connectivity to all units and all amenities for the residents.
Mr. Gibbons, is your understanding that this site will, or this project, this development would in fact be served by public water and sewer?
That's correct.
Could you just briefly describe for us the lighting that is throughout this community? Does it in fact comply with the zoning requirements?
Yes, there's lighting throughout this project, providing sufficient lighting to all parking areas and the access points of the building. And in our opinion, it does comply with the zoning.
Mr. Gibbons, in your opinion, is this property suitable for the proposed use?
It is, yes.
For the record. We would object that this individual can give any sort of suitability land use planning opinion because he's not a land use planner. So we're just going to continue with that objection.
Okay. And, Mr. Gibbons, in your opinion, again, there any adverse impact as a result of the proposed development of the site to the public health, safety, or welfare?
I don't believe so, no.
In your opinion, does this in any way injure or detract from the use of neighboring properties? And in your opinion, does this proposed development serve the best interest of the township and public welfare? Are there any unforeseen impacts on public services such as water or sewer, police, fire, school?
Not that I know of.
I have nothing further for this particular witness on direct.
At this point, it would be appropriate for the board to ask any questions they have.
Can you confirm, are there bike racks for bicycles on the property?
Yes, there are. And on this exhibit, it's probably very small if you have a smaller version, but there are labeled benches, trash receptacles, and bike racks.
And then, I believe, also electric vehicle chargers planned?
Yeah, that's correct. There are designated electric vehicle chargers. I believe there are 12 electric vehicle charging.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask everyone in the audience. It's very distracting with the talking that's going on in the audience. So if we can please be mindful.
I'm guessing there's not a full basketball court because there's just not room?
That's correct.
It's so popular everywhere in Upper Gwinnett. We can't get enough basketball courts. And there's no need for pickleball because there's pickleball right next door, a whole pickleball. Okay. Thank you.
I guess my question was for Sandra, we don't have any code of conduct for residents besides our regular ordinances that we all have to comply with, like grass and things like that, correct?
Correct. We have the property maintenance code. I'd say that's about it as far as code of conduct for township residents.
Okay, thanks.
Are we aware of any other communities in the Upper Gwinnett area that have HOAs where the property manager lives on site?
That would be not typical.
Devlin.
Thank you. I have a handful of questions. Number one, looking at this diagram, where are the freight tracks in relation to the community?
Part of the exhibit on the screen, so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. In, as you were going through answering this gentleman's questions about some of the requirements that have been met, I want clarification to make sure my understanding is correct, that the question I believe was, is this community more than or 50 feet to adjacent residents? And the answer was not applicable for that particular DOT, I believe, overlay, transit overlay? And I want to know, if it's not applicable, what is the distance and why wouldn't it be applicable?
I think I can clarify that. It is the minimum setback for buildings and parking, or I should say buildings, when it's up against a residentially zoned parcel. So there are no residentially zoned parcels that are directly abutting this property. That's why-
What is that? Well, there is. I mean, right, I live on the other side of those tracks.
Correct, but then, but that is not directly abutting this property because we abut the railroad right of way.
Which negates being next to a residence because of the tracks that are there? I see. Just for everyone's knowledge, can you clarify, or do you know the distance between this property and Jackson Street?
I don't know the distance to Jackson Street, but I can tell you that that right of way width that is along our western border, in the area of where our property is located, is 100 feet wide, 100 feet wide.
Okay. So what is the plan as well for the homeless encampment that resides in those woods between your community and my house?
That's probably not a question for Mr. Gibbon. But if the board is willing, we could have Mr. Spightell speak to that after we've gone through all the witnesses.
I would say it might apply to him in relation to the safety and security of the residents he's planning on bringing into his community. So he would have an interest in it.
Devlin, this is an expert in civil engineering. Mr. Papa, again, you're going to talk, you have to put it to the microphone, and again, it's not a course. Mr. Papa, you're going to speak, you need to come to the microphone.
So civil engineering, I would think, applies to everyone who's living anywhere within this proximity. So we have a vested interest in all the activity between-
This is your opportunity to ask questions of the witness. I'm just clarifying that he's an expert, an expert in civil engineering. Your questions that you're opposing may be more appropriate for a different witness. This witness is an expert in civil engineering and has been offered as an expert in civil engineering.
Okay.
To be clear, we're not trying to dodge the question at all, it's just who should answer it?
Okay. Anyone who can answer this, I would be interested in hearing. The other question I had, can we get an explanation, and maybe this is for somebody else to advise me, or for one of you, just to kind of lay, reiterate for everyone what the current zoning is. How, what is the overlay, which I'm reading is the TOD2 Transit Orientated Overlay, that is now opening up other benefits or what this group is taking advantage of for this community? Can someone just explain the changes in zoning that is happening as a regard, you know, as it relates to this development? And in your mind, for those approving this, what are the areas you're really concerned about with that zoning change and how how you're justifying?
Ms. Devlin, again, this is your opportunity to ask questions of the witness, not questions of the board. I can clarify, this property is zoned in the LI Limited Industrial District and is zoned in the TOD2 Transit Oriented Overlay District. That, that has, that's the zoning of the property. There's no change in zoning proposed. Again, if you have questions for the witness, that's your opportunity to ask questions of the witness.
What might then be more direct under your scope of interest or responsibility would be there were questions, I know many of us are wondering about what other demographic requirements will there be for approving people to live in this community that are aside from financial income?
Again, that is outside of the area of expertise of Mr. Gibbon.
Albert Frank.
Mr. Benedetto?
I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, but what gives you guys the right to come into our community and change the zoning or in something that, you know, our fathers put together as an industrial area? You guys want to spot zone it? What, what, answer me.
Again, objection.
Mr. Benedetto, this is not, the zoning hasn't changed. Again, this is questions for the civil engineer, your questions for him, his area of expertise and what he just testified. You're welcome. So, Mr. Papa, it is not your, Mr. Benedetto's opportunity to ask questions.
I'm really not prepared for this, but I will be next time, okay? And I have no more questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Benedetto. Mr. Papa, you're up.
Again, I realize I represent Teresa in this, just Teresa, but I just, a point of clarity here, I think these folks are asking questions of the witness. His attorney is answering the questions. This is a civil case. There's no, you know, he doesn't have a right to not answer a question in a civil proceeding.
Mr. Papa, do you have questions for the witness?
I do. So, Mr. Gibbons, Mr. Gibbons, this particular ordinance, is this particular ordinance, was this created with this use in mind?
I don't believe I can answer that question. I mean, I wasn't involved in that process.
What do you believe it was? So do you think when they crafted this ordinance, they had, was this use being thought about, or?
That wasn't part of any process of creating this ordinance, so I can't answer that question.
Based on all your land use experience?
I don't have an answer to that.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further, no, thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
I have no questions for this witness at this time.
Thanks. Is there comment, any redirect?
No, thank you.
Any other questions for the board, please?
For the audience in the vestibule, there are a few seats that have opened up. If anyone would like to come in, there's one in the front left and one over here.
Michael Wagner? Michael, we're going to take a look at slide 19. Thank you. Michael, slide 19 is what's being projected up on the screen. Could you just describe for us what that is?
That is the landscape plan that was done for the development, part of the land development approval process?
And what is depicted there?
That is the land material that will be put in.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The material, well, the symbols that you show are the plant material that is chosen for the site. And all that plant material is chosen comes from the ordinance and the ordinance requirement. Your ordinance or Upper Gwinnett's ordinance requires buffering, screening, street trees, parking lots, repairing corridor, wetland, stuff like that. So this plan depicts all those requirements.
And, Michael, we are asking for, or the applicant is rather, asking for a partial waiver. We'll get into that again as part of the land development process later. But there is a request for a partial waiver, not all of the plant material fit on the site, is that correct?
Correct. Part of the ordinance for, especially with tree replacements, it's a requirement for five-inch replacements per caliber inch. So if you have 10 inches removed, you have to put two five-inch caliber trees in. The problem with that in the industry is plant material of that size is hard to get. It's only hard to get, it's also hard to dig, transplant, and then also to replant. And furthermore, too, the larger the tree, the longer it takes for that tree to assimilate and to regrow. So part of our waiver request was to, hey, could we take those five inches, knock them down to three-quarter inch whips, one-inch whips, two-inch caliber stuff, which gives you a better dynamic in the landscape, especially when you're doing your buffering.
Michael, what I'll call the top of the plan, that's right along the railroad tracks, could you like just identify that for me with this particular?
So where the railroad tracks are here, there's a very mature wooded area, and again, that's because the right of way of the railroad was there, so you couldn't develop. As you move further into it, we still have larger tree material here, but if you've been out to the site, you will see that the slate has been cleared for future, for future development in its early stages. So all of this is invasive pairs. Unfortunately, all the street trees are calorie pairs, which unfortunately are bird dispersed. So what we've done is we've saved the majority of the mature trees that we could within the development area, and then went back using the ordinance and its replacement requirements and rebuilt buffers all along this area. So anybody in this location on the other side of the tracks, eventually this area will all fill in and will get a nice wooded edge.
And as part of this plan, there is a narrative that goes along with it for that proposed woodland edge and forest management or forest, woodland management, I guess, better than forest, correct?
Correct, correct. We did a, it's a woodland management plan because it's definitely not a forest. Majority wooded areas in the state of Pennsylvania have been clear cut once or twice, depending on the farming community you're in. The narrative is a requirement of the ordinance and working with their township consultant. We came up with the narrative that she was required, and then also a list of what needed to be done, maintenance-wise, but also present, but also future. And one of the biggest maintenance issues that we see, or I have seen on this, is encroachment and invasive material. And that really just comes from the amount of developments that's been going on in the area.
And the cost and obligation to maintain, as you understand it, is required, is a requirement that the applicant has to undertake?
Correct. Any type of development like this, be it a townhouse development, which is an HOA, there's always a maintenance agreement with the landscape contractor. The landscape contractor will get a set of the plans, which has all of our notes, maintenance notes, management plans, all of that as part of the bid process when the Walters group goes out to bid.
Thank you. Michael, I don't have anything further for you?
It would be appropriate for the board to ask any questions of Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple of questions related to the waivers that you had mentioned before. There is also one, in addition to not replacing trees. There is some additional waivers that the developer is seeking. For instance, providing a 25-foot wetland barrier and some stormwater management buffers from 10 to 5 feet. I was wondering if you'd be the expert to speak to those.
Well, what we've done is we've replaced the buffering where it needed to be. If you've been out to that area, you will notice that that wetland area and those wetland areas are really coming from neighboring properties. So what we've done is after the invasive material was removed, we're going to come back and replant that. So we're going to build a healthier buffer in the wetlands and also into the woodland management area.
Michael, if I may, just to clarify a little further, the wetland area, I believe, that's been referred to. Well, maybe. Yes, thank you. And, Michael, what you just pointed out on the screen is, or two areas marked wetland buffer 1 and wetland buffer 2, I'll call it kind of towards the center of the plan, is that correct?
Correct.
And in between those two areas, there is a, there is something crossing that wetland, is that right?
Yeah, there's, it's like there is a driveway and it has inlets on both sides and walls to keep the flow of water going.
And you're understanding that that is where the buffer is missing in that area of the crossing itself, where that drive aisle or road, internal road?
Correct. That would be the only place that it's not.
Thank you.
Ms. Devlin?
I have no, no questions regarding landscaping.
Mr. Benedetto?
No questions at this time.
My only question is, sir, when you're speaking of waivers, are you speaking of waivers from provisions of the land development ordinance? Sounds like you're welcome to.
Subdivision of land development.
Subdivision, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
I have no questions for this witness.
Good, thank you. Corey? Corey, if we could go back to, again, what I'll call page 17 of this presentation. Could you just describe for us, this is the site plan, could you just describe for us the internal circulation for particular and pedestrian traffic?
Certainly. And again, good evening, everyone. Corey Chase with Dynamic Traffic. As Mr. Gibbons mentioned, we do have a single full movement access drive along Pembroke Parkway. That provides the primary access to the subject, sorry, I'll slow down. That provides the primary access to the subject property. As you traverse the site from east to west, you can see the main access aisle running perpendicular to Pembroke Parkway. You also have Drive B, which runs in a north-south direction, which provides access to buildings 3 and 4. The main access drive, as it continues from east to west, bends in a northerly direction and provides access to building 6 and building 5, all the way to the northern property line. As part of our involvement in the application, we worked with Mr. Gibbons in his office on the site access circulation. We also prepared a transportation impact assessment.
Hold on, before you get there, sorry.
It's okay, Corey.
At the, I'll call it the left-hand side of the site, there is something that's labeled gated emergency access only. Could you just describe for us what that is? Could you just describe for us what that is?
Certainly. As was indicated by our council, we do provide a secondary means of emergency access to the subject property. It's located in the southwestern corner of the property. It's to be gated such that it would only be able to be accessed by emergency vehicles.
Corey, you started to just mention the traffic study that was done. If we look at the last slide in this presentation, there's a summary of a traffic study. There it is. That's, could you just describe for us what that executive summary is and then what you did in creating this traffic study?
Certainly, the document on the screen before you is the executive summary from the transportation impact assessment prepared by my office, which was last revised January 8th, 2025. That provides a high-level summary of the traffic impact assessment that was prepared to assess the pre- and post-development conditions with the development of the subject property. As was mentioned, we are proposing 60 units. So utilizing that as a reference point, we looked at data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the national and state standard for developing traffic projections, not just for residential uses, but for office, commercial, industrial use as well. As traffic engineers, we focus on peak hour traffic impacts. For residential uses, we focus on the weekday morning, weekday evening peak hours. Those coincide with the peak commuter hours on the adjacent roadway network. Utilizing the proposed 60-unit residential development, it's projected to generate a maximum of approximately 30 additional trips during each of those peak hours. That correlates to approximately one trip every two minutes during those times. To give the commission an idea as to what that level of traffic constitutes, the Institute of Transportation Engineers has set a threshold of 50 additional trips during a peak hour is what they have the level set for to actually do a full traffic impact study. So based on the national standards, their recommendation would be that you wouldn't even be required to prepare a full traffic impact study for a development of this size, but in an abundance of caution and to provide the township with as much information as possible to render their decision. We did prepare a full traffic impact study for the development. We did a pre- and post-development analysis at the two adjacent signalized intersections, Pembroke Parkway, Church Road, and found that there were no degradations in the operational condition at that intersection between the pre- and post-development condition. So what that means is the intersection is going to continue to operate in the same level of service that it does today in the future condition with the development of the subject property.
Corey, I'm going to take this out of engineer speak and make it into something that I understand. What it seems that you're saying is that there's no adverse impact as a result of this development with respect to the roadways and traffic.
That's correct.
And it doesn't exist, this development does not exacerbate or any congestion on roadways as they currently exist today?
That's correct.
And from a traffic perspective, is this property suitable for the proposed use?
It is.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I have one. When was that study done? It was done, was it done when that new pickleball and the new business moved in there? Was it done during school year, things like that?
Sure, that's a great question. So, yeah, that's, counts were done in September of 2024. What we do is we take baseline counts to establish the existing conditions. Then we'll factor in an amount of background growth to account for additional future development in the area that's ongoing pursuant to PANDOT standards. You'll also note that on page eight of our report, so we reached out to the township and the township's traffic engineer to determine if there are any significant area developments that we should include in addition to that background traffic. They did identify those warehouse buildings, which are located at 203 Church Road, that we should account for. So we were provided copies of that traffic study and did account for those additional developments in our analysis.
Thank you. Devlin.
I, I, yeah, I'm sorry for the pause. I know there are some questions about why the need for all the parking and would there be visitor parking as well at this community? And, yeah, I think I'll just stop with that for now.
Certainly, that's a great question as well. So the number of parking spaces, we have 117 parking spaces proposed on site. That is compliant with the township's requirements for the development as it currently exists. So that's the genesis for the proposed parking supply. The proposed parking requirements for each of the bedroom types, the one-bedroom and the two-bedroom and up, do account for visitor parking in that requirement, so that is assumed in that parking requirement.
Okay. And originally, when this development was being formed, did it start off with the intent to have as much parking as it does now? Or were they really banking on the need for train commuting?
I apologize, ma'am. I wasn't part of the overall drafting of the ordinance, so I'm not able to speak on what drove those requirements.
No, I'm not talking about the ordinance. I'm talking about the intent of the community, the planning around the community. So when this originally was designed, was parking so much of a priority? Was this added on to accommodate people who aren't going to be traveling? Or originally were we really banking on the train being the type of people who would be living here? That would meet their needs?
So certainly the train station provides an added benefit to the community, just given the proximity of the train station. In my professional opinion, the parking that we're proposing on site, it exceeds what we typically provide for development.
Okay. All right, that's helpful.
Mr. Benedetto.
I have no questions at this time.
Your Papa.
Sir, just a couple of questions. This is the executive summary. Will the actual full study be admitted into evidence? Is that part of the application, the land development, the land development plan?
Yeah, the full study was submitted as part of the application.
For the application, that's right.
By the township's traffic consultant.
Great. And, again, just to clarify your opinion, so we have 60 new households coming into the community, where right now there are no households, in your opinion, and there's no impact on traffic?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Griffin.
I have no questions in regards to traffic impact.
Redirect.
No, thank you.
Further questions from the board?
Fred?
Just a matter of housekeeping. I believe I forgot to mark Mr. Ebert's CV, but I have marked it as applicant's.
Thank you. Mr. Ebert, could you just describe for us how this proposed development will be served from a sanitary sewer perspective?
Yes, this is an existing lot in an existing development that has a private sanitary sewer system. It's managed and regulated under the Pembroke Business Center Condominium Association, and it is an existing member within that association. The wastewater that will be generated by this development, it ought to be two buildings in the back, five and six, will go by grinder pumps or a low-pressure system through a proposed gravity sanitary sewer system that will be extended that will serve the community center and the remaining four lots. That will then flow down to an existing private pump station. That private pump station actually needs to be upgraded with two new pumps, which will then convey it to the existing upper-gwented sanitary sewer system for treatment at your treatment plant. Because it's developed by a private treatment, a private sewer system, we initially reached out to DEP for guidance, and we received guidance from DEP on how to handle the sewage facilities planning, as well as what permitting would be required. Because, and why is a planning module required? It's technically changing. So it was a planning module that was done for the original development, and then as each lot got developed, that, you know, there was a separate planning effort, whether it be an exemption or a full planning module, that was done for that. And that's required because it flows through a private, the operated sewer system.
Fred, when you mentioned there'd be a pumping station that would be upgraded, once that station is upgraded, is there sufficient capacity in the private collection system to serve this development?
Yes, there is. And we actually went out, performed site visits out there and reviewed that and provided that to the township wastewater engineer as well.
And the cost of those improvements will be borne by this applicant, correct?
That is correct.
From your perspective, Fred, is this property suitable for the proposed use from a sewer perspective?
Yes, it's consistent with the existing planning module that was done for the original development, which is incorporated into the Township Act 537 plan, so it's all consistent.
Thank you, Fred. Nothing further.
Questions from the board?
I have a question. The private sewer, is there an agreement between the applicant and the private sewer owner?
Yes, there is. They're a member of that association, and that is included in the planning module.
Got it. Thank you.
You discussed these plans with the wastewater treatment engineers. Do they opine that an additional 60 households eventually filtering into our existing system, what impact would that have on the capacity and the flow in Upper Gwinnett Township, the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, what they actually do is they provide a certification. It's a component 3J, which is a, they look at, the township annually prepares what's known as a chapter 94, which identifies all their available capacity and looks ahead five years. So they looked at that and provided that certification. We provided them with additional flow information within this private area and where it exactly discharged, so that they could model it going down to your treatment plant. And as a result, they recommended that there was sufficient capacity and that will not create a existing or projected five-year hydraulic or organic overload on either your conveyance, collection, conveyance, or treatment system.
Fred, you said an awful lot of "they." Who are you referring to as "they"?
Oh, "they" is Gilmore Associates. Sorry. That's a, wait.
That's going to be my question. And I also saw some waivers with regard to stormwater pipe and some reducing freeboard. Is that going to have any impact on flow into the wastewater treatment plant as well?
The storm sewer just has nothing to do with that. It is a totally separate, the sanitary sewer system is totally separate from the stormwater system.
I guess my question is reducing the capacity, the size of the pipe itself. That's one of the waivers where you're seeking here that we were asked to consider. So my question was, it might not be for you. Is that going to have an impact, possibly overflow that could lead into stormwater, leading into wastewater treatment? Would there be any potential negative environmental impacts, that kind of stuff?
Maybe I can help address that. So from a, specifically, the waiver was to use storm pipes less than 18 inches. Were the minimum storm pipe, were using the minimum storm pipe covered 12 inches? So I guess that's where my concern, you may not be the expert. Sure. And again, we can address those as part of the land development process. Really, that's where stormwater gets addressed most times. We kind of have a process here that's a little, you know, combined as a result of what's happening this evening. However, Mr. Gibbons would be the appropriate person to answer that question when the time comes. I will tell you that those systems, though, are completely separate, and I would bet that Fred would tell me that there's no way they're going to overflow into the other.
Better off.
If I may, if the board okay if I ask a clarifying question? Mr. Ebert, you used a lot of terms of art. I want to make sure that I understand one thing. This brought, the proposal will be served by public sewer?
Yes.
Privately owned?
Yes, a private conveyance, which is part of the overall public sewer system.
Thanks.
Ms. Devlin.
No questions.
Mr. Benedetto.
I just have one thing to say about the water situation. When it rains, one-inch rain, my yard gets flooded. And I live right behind the area where you guys are going to put this building, or... And you guys, do you have any solution to that? Because if you don't, if you don't set that water up right, there's going to be major floods there.
Mr. Benedetto, again, this expert is talking about sanitary sewer, not stormwater. Do you have any questions about sanitary?
There is a problem with the water, there really is.
Mr. Papa.
No questions.
Mr. Griffin.
I have no questions for this witness.
Any redirect?
No, thank you.
Do you have more witnesses?
Yes.
We're going to, the board's going to take a short bio break, five minutes.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Come back at 8:56.
Come back at 8:56. We're gonna get started. Please take your seats. Thank you.
Everyone can please take their seats. We're gonna get started. Mr. Clement, you indicated that you have no additional witnesses. Do you have any additional evidence?
Not, not anything other than we have already submitted. We just asked, did our slide deck be moved into evidence formally, please?
And would you also move the admission of your pages two through six, which are your experts' seats?
Yes, please.
Can we just stop the talking in the audience, please? It's tough to hear up here. Thank you.
Does anyone have any, having parties that are subject to the admission of exhibits A1 through A6? See, none, they will be admitted. Mr. Papa? Understood. It does, it does...
The mic is for the, is for the people watching. It's not for the people here. Yeah.
Just my, thank you, thanks for the word. Just my continuing objection, the CDs are fine, but again, because I didn't object to every single one, but we sort of, I just wanna make sure the record is very, very clear that we've objected to any land use opinion given by the purported land use planner. He's not a land use planner. That's all. Thank you.
Understood. Exhibits A1 through A6 will be admitted. Ms. Devlin? Your opportunity to present any witnesses or evidence that you would like for the conditional use hearing.
I do not have any planned witnesses.
Mr. Benedetto? Is your opportunity to present any witnesses or evidence this evening?
I don't have any questions at this time.
This is not the time for questions. This is your opportunity to present witnesses or evidence as a party to the hearing.
I don't know what to say. I got a lot to say, but I just can't think of it right now. I know that this project you guys are doing, it sounds great, and I don't deprive anybody of living somewhere and having a place to live for the convenient thing, but back there, it's just not, it's not a good spot. It's an industrial area, and you wanna change it into a spot zone. I'm telling you, you're gonna have more problems back there. Because I see it. I see it. I walk back there. You got, there's so many people back there just throwing their garbage all over the place. And it's terrible. It's terrible. You can't walk back there in the summertime. It stinks so bad. You know, and I can, if you're gonna put, you're gonna put units back there, it's an industrial area. There's trailers. Everywhere you look, there's trailers. Forty trailers that are on, you know. Nobody's using them. They're just parked there. You wanna put a building right next to that, or three buildings, or whatever you're gonna do? It's just not gonna... You guys have to take a walk back there. Go walk back there and just see what they're trying to do. Have any of you guys gone up there and you've all done it? I took forty pictures one day, and I think I showed them to you, and you said, "Oh, we got pictures." It's like a slop house back there. And if you don't, you don't come in there and do something about it. Like, yeah, two days ago, I went up there and I was looking, and there was this group from the church up in Towamansett, and they were cleaning it up, and I was thinking, "Gosh, who sent you guys?" And they said, "Oh, we're just, we're just doing this to clean up the area." If you don't have something like that going on back there, you're gonna have problems. There's, they curse all night long, they, you know, and it's just, it's just a bad scene. And the water is gonna create problems back there. I just, you know, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Papa?
Thank you. May I please, Board, I'm Mr. Christopher Pape. I represent Teresa Price in this matter. And we just, we had three witnesses. The board did not accept two witnesses, so we're gonna, we just have one. We have Teresa. So I'm gonna call Teresa. Come on up.
Price, I believe you've already been informed, correct? Remain under oath.
Share the mic like we're singing a duet or something. Teresa, would you please introduce yourself for the board?
I'm Teresa Price. Long-term resident, 739 Jack.
Mr. Clement is willing to share his microphone if you want.
Teresa, maybe say that, just introduce yourself one more time. I'm not sure if the mic picked that up.
I am Teresa Price. I've been a resident of Upper Gwinnett for over 10 years, and I do own my property at 739 Jack.
Okay. Teresa, who do you reside with?
I have a family.
Okay, so kids?
Yeah, I have a son.
Great. Now, so Teresa, this proposal, where you're at right now, if you could give the board some idea geographically, how close are you to the proposal?
The railroad tracks are probably maybe 50, 75 feet from my house. So my house backs up to the railroad tracks, and this development will be on the other side.
Now, where this, where the development is going to go, is proposed to go, what's there currently?
It's an open area. I drove past there today so I could see it in person. And it's an open lot with trees, and there is a building on the corner of Pembroke and the entrance, or church, rather, and the entrance to this development.
And how did you become aware of this particular proposal?
I started getting involved about two years ago, coming to meetings about this because I'm concerned about the effect that this building will have on my property values. So that's when I started getting involved.
So Teresa, you're, you're, do you have any, now, you're, so you mentioned you're concerned about property values. Now, what is, can you describe, what do you mean by that?
When I bought my house, I did not realize that the houses right next to me were rentals. I later found that there are three rentals across the street from me. During the time I lived there, there is another rental that opened up directly in front of me, and then there's some duplexes up the street from me. So when I walk out my house, I already is surrounded by rental properties. And I even have the phone number for the landlord who handles the houses next to me, and when they don't mow their lawn or don't take care of things, I call her. Because I like Upper Gwinnett. It is a very nice neighborhood, and I would like it to stay that way.
Teresa, I said, there are no, there's no housing there right now. No one lives in this.
No. An open, empty lot.
Okay. And you're aware, are you aware of the proposal and how many homes and units would be there?
Yes. And I'm very concerned about that. Sixty units is a lot of people.
Okay. And do you have any, so, so do you believe this will positively impact your home value or negatively impact your home value?
Having past experience of being a former Norristown resident, I think it'll be a negative effect.
Okay.
Because I've seen it. I've gone through it. Norristown now is probably 75% rentals. I had a house there. I had to, I had to do a short sale to get rid of it because the property values plummeted. And the only way to get out was to do a short sale. And fortunately, you know, my agent found someone to buy it, but I owed more on the house than the property was worth at that time. And I do not want to go through that again. And I have a feeling that, you know, this is just an open gate. They do conditional zoning for this property. Where else are they going? They could do it somewhere else, and I'm very concerned.
Okay. Teresa, do you have any other concerns other than your lowering property value?
I hear that they're gonna do background checks and all this other great stuff, but me personally, I would not move in an area that's industrial, and then all of a sudden you drop sixty houses in the middle of it. I'm concerned about the type of people who are gonna wanna live there. I understand, yeah, okay, you're gonna do all these great things, but I'm concerned about crime. I mean, we already have the homeless people back there. And, you know, when I come home at night, you know, I have to look around to make sure I'm okay. This just compounds the problem.
And you mentioned the development is close to trains, the railroad.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, you know, that little dotted line up there is a railroad track. So, you know, I'm worried about, you know, are they gonna do something to prevent children from going up on the railroad tracks? Right now, every day, I see people on those railroad tracks, crossing the railroad tracks, walking the railroad tracks. I mean, I'm just worried about public safety. What are they gonna do to prevent people from going up on the tracks? And that is an active railroad line. And the trains come through, middle of the night, nine o'clock in the morning, it's an active railroad.
Teresa, do you have any concerns about how this, this development affects the overall community plan, the overall zoning structure of this?
Yeah, this whole thing about the sewer, I'm worried about that. The water, I'm worried about that. We already have problems with power. Power, we have power outages all the time. So I'm like, what is the infrastructure? What are they gonna do to help us current residents not have problems from this development?
Are there other residential zones in Upper Gwinnett that you're aware of? Other places where residences, that are zoned for residents, for folks that wanna live, for homes?
Yeah.
Are there other apartment complexes?
Yeah, there's other apartment complexes.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Board, have any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You had cited concern with regard to crime as well as property value. A year or two ago, I remember Police Chief Duffy taking the initiative to call around the police departments of other municipalities that the Walters Group has engaged in these very types of programs in. Are you familiar with the results of that study?
Yes, I was at that meeting. And I heard his report.
I'm gonna wait for him to finish his question.
Oh, sorry.
He's trying to take down everybody's testimony.
Do you remember the impact that Chief Duffy and his colleagues in police departments in other municipalities that have these projects in them had?
Yes, he said there was no impact.
Do you also remember one of the concerns, not just yourself shared, but us as well, shared with regard to housing value as well?
No, I did not hear any of that.
Would it surprise you if the expert said that these particular programs could actually enhance your property value?
I'd like to see that.
Because I remember that was discussed as well.
And who made them and their qualifications. Because I don't believe them.
I think that was provided previously, and that was discussed at previous meetings that perhaps you have attended as well. But I just wanted to address those two issues of housing values and crime, because I know those are concerns of not only yourselves, but probably some of the people in this room, and frankly, some of the commissioners as well. And those concerns at least were a sage for this commissioner when, you know, our police chief, as well as some of the expert, did a lot of diligence regarding those exact issues.
So can I ask you a question?
No, I am not a witness. Thank you.
So am I done?
You have to, you're still subject to cross-examination, Mr. Clement.
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Devlin, any questions for this witness? I do not. Mr. Benedetto?
I have no questions.
Mr. Griffin, any questions for the witness?
I have no questions for my favorite neighbor.
Mr. Papa, any redirect?
I'd just like to reserve a moment or two for argument, I guess. I don't think we need to do that to close, or I could just...
Do you have no further questions?
I don't have further questions. I wanted to reserve time for argument.
Any further, hold on. One second. Any further questions from the board for this witness?
I, um... So I, I think we can all agree that the value of our homes matters to all of us. And I think what Commissioner Amol was referring to, some of the statistics I remember from the past, was something along the lines of that community, like ours, that have a variety of housing options, make it a more attractive for home buyers, employers. I believe that, my question, I guess, is when they can, when people can afford to live and contribute to the community, we learn from past meetings that it can strengthen our communities, not weaken it, and have a long-term effect on our positive effect when we cater to all kinds of different incomes with housing. Do you recall any of that, of remembering that, or how we talked about the property values and how a site like this... Do you recall any of that, of remembering that, or how we talked about the property values and how a, a site like this could by offering homes for people to live here? Um, and it could also enhance our, our businesses too, we have more people living here. Um, and I think, and I have a question for you. And no, I guess it's not allowed. Is it two people per bedroom? Is that correct? Max?
Yes, two people per bedroom, max.
All right. That's, that's what I remember from previous, um, meetings. Because I too was, you know, our property values matter. I've been here thirty-three years. So, um, that's what I remember. Maybe, you know, this will jog us, hoping maybe jog your memory about, about that. But I, I, I find, I, I found it hard to find the negative impact. So maybe if you had that information, that this would, uh, cause a negative impact, I would certainly like, like to read that or something like that. Cause I, I, I was having a hard time finding that. So did you, do you have information that this negatively, negatively impacts our property values?
Um, are you asking me to be an expert about property values and whether or not?
It could, it matters. I'm sorry, that's, I have to let you finish.
I mean, it matters to me. And as I said to the gentleman, whatever meeting that was, I was not at it. I would like to, I know the minutes are probably public, so I would love to read that. Um, but I also would like to know wherever their properties are in New Jersey. Um, I'd like to actually do some research and, and find my own research to validate whether or not the property values went up or down. Because in my experience, they go down. And that is my concern.
All right, thank you. Mr. Papa, do you have any other witnesses or evidence?
The, the board has found, uh, that Teresa is, is our only, uh, party here. Uh, but we do, we do have a witness we'd like to call who is Fred Hankin, not as a party, but in his role as a professional, as a real estate professional.
Can you give an offer of proof?
Sure. Um, we would have Mr. Hankin testify in his experience. Fred is a real estate, um, professional here in Upper Gwinnett, been that for quite a while. And I believe he does have relevant evidence to testify to because the board has just asked my client, uh, for some information on property values.
Board was following up on a statement that your client made about property values, whether she had any, any report for a statement that she made.
And, and I have another witness I'm asking to put on.
I'm not sure the relevance of this witness, uh, with respect to this use and the conditional use proceeding.
Well, I, I think the relevance from a conditional use perspective is there, there are, so this particular ordinance lays out conditions of a conditional use, um, in this particular ordinance. And they're all different when it comes to conditional uses. But the language that this ordinance uses is that the applicant, this is an interesting ordinance. They shift the burden. So there's a burden shifting device. That means that the applicant here actually has the burden to prove with credible evidence that the use is suitable and not against the public interest. So I think if there is any relevant evidence that, uh, this use has the possibility of reducing property values, that would clearly be relevant evidence on suitability and the contrariness to the public interest.
I'm gonna object.
Um, Mr. Papa, which section are you referring to?
Oh, sure. Um, so, I have it right here, the actual language. Part five. An applicant for a conditional use has the burden of establishing, okay? And then the relevant part is that the allowance of the conditional use will not be contrary to the public interest. That's an affirmative duty that these folks have. And that the application shall be suitable in terms of effects of highway traffic and safety, including, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I, I think contrary to the public interest, suitability, property values clearly be relevant as counsel has just testified to state.
Mr. Papa, is that, uh, particular section that you cited relate, you said, highway traffic and safety? Does it say property value anywhere in there?
No, it says generally, doesn't say anything about highway tra, no, part B, the allowance of the conditional use will not be contrary to the public interest.
We're gonna adjourn into executive session. Start it again. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Papa, we're gonna need to allow you to ask Mr. Hankin some questions regarding his qualifications only for this time. Do you have a seat?
I do.
We will open him up for questions regarding his qualifications only and we'll make a determination on whether or not he is qualified as an expert in this matter.
Sure.
He's subject to cross-examination from all parties having status.
Thank you.
Mr. Hankin, do you have any sworn first?
I've already been sworn. Uh, yes, my name is Fred Hankin. I've lived in Upper Gwinnett since nineteen eighty-five. Uh, living next to, um, I'll get into this later, next to Fitzpatrick Container Company. I remember Fitzpatrick Container, I lived next to there. And then we moved, um, nineteen ninety-one to another property in Upper Gwinnett.
Okay. Now Fred, um, how close do you live to the proposed, uh?
As the crow flies, about a mile, a little bit more.
Papa, the questions are supposed to be related to qualifications as an expert witness. That's what, that's what the questions are supposed to be relating to right now.
I just give some background.
Background's not necessary. We're doing expert qualifications right now.
Okay. So Fred, uh, what is your, uh, what is your profession?
I am a residential real estate agent.
And do you work for a certain brokerage or some?
Yes, Keller Williams and Blue Bell.
Keller Williams and Blue Bell, okay. How long have you been a real estate agent?
Uh, a little over fifteen years.
Okay.
residential, not commercial.
Residential, not commercial, okay. Now, um, have you done any, uh, listings or sales in Upper?
Of course.
Um, can you just ballpark what percentage of your, uh, listings are here in Upper Gwinnett?
I, I can be more specific regarding Montgomery County. I've done, that's where most of my business is, in Upper Gwinnett. I'd have to look. I don't know specifically, um, maybe twenty percent or more.
But you're mainly focused here in Montgomery County?
Uh, that is correct, almost entirely. If, if I get business referred to Philadelphia or say other areas, I usually refer that business because my expert, my line of expertise is in, is in, uh, upper, you know, the North Penn area primarily.
Okay. Now, um, definitely, when you, uh, when you list properties, uh, do you provide, what, uh, okay, so what, what do you do when you list properties? Can you just explain briefly how that works?
Normally, if someone asks me to list a property, I'll, I'll pull what's called comps. Look at the comps, we'll look at the number of bedrooms, bathrooms, uh, where the property's located. Depending on where the property's located, could affect the value of where you're gonna list the property at.
Yeah, I'm gonna object to this line of questioning. I don't see how this is, um, related to, uh, this witness's qualification as an expert.
Um, the response is it's directly related to how he's, uh, qualified as an expert. Again, we, we've had testimony, we've had questions about real property values. He's explaining exactly as a real estate professional, how he determines what a property should be valued for listing. So I think that's obviously relevant.
I'll give you a little bit of leeway.
Sure.
Let's keep it on, on topic.
Sure. Okay. So, Fred, just briefly, so in, in determining the value of a prop, you, well, number one, you need to determine the value of property listed.
That's correct.
And, and again, briefly, you, how do you, again, you look at comparable properties?
We look at comparables. Um, we also, um, take tours of the property because what people think their houses are worth may not be what they're worth depending on what the condition of the house, interior, the interior of the house. So many people will look on Zillow and other real estate sites to see what the value is. But my job is to set an expectation based upon the quali, in the quantity of the house, where it's located. Location's very important. And real estate location is location, is location. I think everyone in this room understands that.
Okay, can you describe for the board, how does location affect value?
Well, again, I lived in Mendham.
Papa, that's getting into the substance of the testimony. We're here, we're, right now, we're just discussing Mr. Hankin's qualification. He has not been qualified as an expert yet, so he cannot offer that testimony yet.
I, I then, uh, I guess I would, I would make an offer to the board based on the testimony that Mr. Hankin has just given about his fifteen years of experience in listing real property. And him, every time he lists a real property, having to determine value, and him having an expert knowledge in determining valuations of properties. Certainly, as he just said, as to, and how that valuation shifts as to where it's, the property is located and what it's located adjacent to.
Want any cross-examination based on Mr. Hankin's qualifications as a real estate expert? I'm sorry, Mr. Papa, you're offering him as a property valuation expert, a real estate expert, or both?
I'm offering him as a, uh, as a real estate expert. Uh, and evaluation, and again, inherent in him being a real estate expert and being a real estate salesperson is arriving at value. We understand he's not a real estate appraiser, we understand that, but he has to come up with values of properties. Again, given the, given the broad rules of evidence, zoning hearing and his own proceedings under municipal planning code, this would, you know, I think he would clearly qualify. I'll turn, I'll turn to the.
Thank you. Mr. Hankins, uh, your counsel just indicated, or counsel just indicated that you're not an appraiser. You, you are not an appraiser.
I am not a certified appraisal, appraiser. That is a different, um, field of, field of work. Now, when we list properties, we do do the best we can to, to get to where we think the house will appraise. I can tell you from personal experience that almost all the properties I have do appraise at or above where I've listed them at. I know that's probably not your specialty, but.
True. And Mr. Hankins, with respect to, um, impacts of uses on property, you've never done, or have you ever done, um, an analysis that has looked at various uses and their impact on property value?
Could you rephrase that? I'm sorry.
Ever done an analysis, a study, um, that has been accepted by any board or institute or whatever, um, where that, uh, analysis is, uh, shows the impact on property values of other uses?
Not, not for, not as, not for that reason now, but for individual property.
Um, again, I, I don't have any more questions, but I do not see how this individual qualifies as someone who can take a look at what a proposed use would have, or what, what impact a proposed use would have on property value.
Devlin, any questions on the witness's qualifications as a real estate and property valuation expert?
In your role, are you familiar or do you track the percentage of rentals in the area where you are listing?
No, I do not track. I, because we, I, we can look in public records and tell us who the owner of the property is. It doesn't, it doesn't tell us who lives in the property.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Benedetto, any questions for this witness's, for his qualifications?
I have no questions.
Mr. Griffith, any questions for this witness's qualifications?
I have no qual, questions.
We're going to allow Mr. Hankin to testify as an expert. His testimony will be given to weight that the board, if it is appropriate, based on the qualifications that were offered. Mr. Papa, we'll be mindful of that he was qualified as an expert. So factual testimony is not appropriate, expert testimony.
So Fred, you have reviewed, well, you've reviewed this particular plan and proposal.
That's correct. I have been to multiple meetings in the last three years. I can't tell you how many times I've been here for meetings. Um, but, you know, I, I think I have a lot of knowledge about what's going on here. A lot of what I'm seeing here is really, um, is spot zoning, quite frankly, which is not something that as a resident of forty years should show up and think this is.
Witness Clement, about to make an impression, Frank, and pause please.
Uh, this witness was qualified as an expert, I believe, in valuation, not in zoning.
That's correct.
Yes.
So Fred, but you, you are very familiar with, with this particular property, just as a, as a real estate development?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, and again, have you listed real properties, uh, that are close to apartment complexes, multiple?
Have I? Yes. It, 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 it varies. There were fifteen years. I'd have to go back and look at some specifics, but, um, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if, if you're listing a property that would be close to a development, a large development of this size, versus a property that was not close to a development of this size, would that have any impact on the property that you are listing?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, what would that impact be?
It, it, most people, again, I'm gonna go back to what everyone in the room should understand. Real estate's all about location, location, location. So when you, um, I've, I've had clients say, I don't wanna live in a, you know, or purchase a home because, um, there's a lot of traffic and you can't get out of the neighborhood. There's a, um, when I lived over in Mendham Station, there, Fitzpatrick Container Company was over there. Literally in your backyard, there's a fence and there was that container company that was producing, um, cardboard containers.
Mr. Hankin, your testimony, limited expert testimony, you're getting into now is factual testimony.
I'm doing my best.
Good. Qualified as an expert, though.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so, so Fred, again, overall, i- if a, a property were listed closer to this particular development based on your knowledge of it, would it have a, a higher value or a lower value, um, all things being equal? Lots of factors, location, location, but all things being equal to a property that was not close to a development like this? An expert.
My, my professional opinion, uh, this type of a project's being so close to other residential properties, would, would deflate those property values to some extent. properties would deflate those property values to some extent, depending on the market demand and some other factors that we don't have control over.
Thank you. No further questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. The board would be the next for questions. I apologize.
Fred, you just defined a second ago that this type of property would deflate property values. Can you give an example of where you listed a property, where you, where you worked with property owners listing properties near this type of program that impacted the property values?
There, it's not that, it's not that it affects it, usually the properties are already built and so are the other properties, so therefore, when someone's, when someone's looking out of their backyard and they see an apartment complex or a manufacturing building...
I understand. My question specifically was, do you have any examples of the properties that you've helped your clients list that were near programs such as this, such as the program that the Walters Group is proposing here tonight? Because you said a second ago, in your experience, this type of project would deflate property value. So I wanted to know, in what experience are you referring to that this exact type of project has impacted property values? Do you, have you worked with a client that has, that you've listed a property where this type of project has been in the community?
I'd have to think back, because I sell a lot of houses, so it's a little challenging for me to think of something without the bat. But I, again, I do know, one thing's clients look for when they buy a house, they like to look at the area they view, they want to see what's around them. And one of the questions that all of me, or a lot of, what is this? What is this? What is, what is a, what's the, what's the land use of a property that's vacant next to them, for example?
Understood. I was just, I was just trying to drill down on your testimony as an expert on, you know, having experience with this type of project as it, as it impacts, as it deflates property value in your opinion. And you've testified that you're not sure that you've had experience working with clients that have listed properties near this type of project. So if that's the case...
These projects are pretty, pretty unusual, so...
So I guess I'm, I guess I'm pushing, I guess I'm trying to tease out your testimony, your expert testimony, a little bit.
Sure.
Where if you've said, in your experience, where listing housing for your clients, houses for your clients, near this type of project has deflated the property value, is it, is it the case that you're unable to provide an example of that because these projects are so rare and unusual? Or do you just not have experience listing properties for your clients?
I have experience listing properties.
Hankins, you gotta let him finish his question.
Specifically, near these types of projects. Your testimony was, these types of projects deflate property value. My question was, can you cite an example where you've helped one of your clients list a property, or thought about buying a property near one of these projects to satisfy your expert opinion that it actually deflates property values for your client? That's what I'm asking.
I'd really have to take a look, to really...
So is it the case that you're guessing, then, as to whether...
I'm not guessing.
Whether or not this project, as it relates...
If I had a client that had this in their backyard, they would, I'd have to be honest with them, say you have more difficulty in not selling it because of the high density behind you.
But your testimony was that, in your experience, it deflates property value. You're unable to cite any examples...
I go into the off...
Hold on, Fred. Unable to cite any examples where that's actually the case?
I know from working for 15 years, there are multiple examples of this. Maybe not myself, but I know, I've seen these situations occur.
Any other questions for the board?
Could the proposed plans, the pictures that we've seen, is, is that what we can assume this project is going to look like?
I guess that's a question for you, then. My question for Fred.
We're just with Fred right now.
All right. So I'm, I'm looking at the pictures of these properties, and I'm thinking, these look nice. If we could show those pictures again, we have with courts, with basketball courts, with the landscaping, with everything that this has, in your experience, would somebody looking to buy property near this housing affordability development, would they look at this and say, oh, we don't want to live there?
I'll give you an example. So you're going to have basketball courts there. How many are there going to be there?
It's a half court.
A half court. So, the one thing I experienced in my own neighborhood is noise from pickleball, for example. So if someone were to experience that while they're looking at a home, that'd make them not, make them question, what is that, what's, why is there noise? Why is that going on?
So in your experience, if they heard kids playing basketball, they would say, oh, no, we don't want to buy here?
No, I'm just saying because there's that, because of the density of the housing, because of the housing density. I don't know if I'm making this up.
No, but I, I was just wondering, in your expert opinion, if people would, would see this, minus the basketball courts, but if they would see a development like this, like pictured, and what we've seen over the years that you've been here, would, would potential buyers of those properties nearby say no? If they look like, if they look like that, hypothetically, if they look like that, would people actually say no? They wouldn't want to live there? They wouldn't want to buy there because of that?
Well, I think, I think it's the proximity to that for the, for the people who already have existing homes, having high, high density housing so close to their home. Because you're going to have more, you're going to have more people around that...
When was high density?
I'm sorry?
High density? I didn't hear that tonight. Why are you saying it's high density?
This is considered high density.
Who?
Whom?
Mr. Hankins has not been qualified as an expert on that.
Okay.
Mr. Hankins offering factual, high density, that has not been offered in evidence, not a, not a professional opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hankins, you'd mentioned that the noise possibly from a half of a basketball court.
Or, or other activities.
Or more, or, let me finish, please. Or could possibly deter buyers from, you know, looking at these as viable housing options because of the noise? Is it your expert opinion as a real estate professional that properties near parks where pickleball, such as the issue that you had had, where there's basketball courts, that properties in your actual parks where families can go and enjoy, the facilities themselves are actually less valuable than, than properties that are further away from parks?
I, I think the question more is the fact that if I'm living in close proximity to a place like this, and you're looking out and seeing, again, I don't want to get into the density situation because I'm not told that, but the fact that you have this high density behind you, in my opinion, does not add value to someone's home.
Understood.
Regardless of other way of...
I, I'm just trying to, you know, understand your position as an expert, you know, in these matters. Your, your opinion was that near these projects would deflate the value, but we don't yet have experience or can't remember an experience in your professional experience that you had a client that's experienced that deflation in property value. And then I heard a concern about possible noise pollution if you go to basketball courts or pickleball. So I wanted to drill down on that. If it was your opinion, if it was your opinion that, you know, around other noisy areas like parks, as your, in your expert opinion, would that also deflate property value?
Well, you also have, you also have light pollution, which, so if I'm in a close proximity of that, I'd be seeing a lot more lights on. So that, that certainly is a factor, that I have that kind of issue, the noise pollution. There could be safety issues as well. We don't obviously know that. I know you presented the fact that your studies show that there isn't. I'm not, I'm not qualified to say that there isn't safety issue. I'm not saying that.
Understood. Just for clarification, it wasn't my study?
No, I, no, that was introduced.
To communicate to the police chiefs of municipalities that have this exact type of project.
And I was at...
Took the opportunity to speak directly to the chiefs of the actual precincts that are in these communities, and they haven't noticed any increase in crime.
I was at, I was at that meeting, as I said, I've come to many, many places here, probably since the 90s, early 90s, when I was, so I'm very familiar with just township and, and how it was developed, and what the expectations are of the citizens of this township.
Thank you. Mr. Hankins, you testify quite a bit about property values and the impact that this proposed project may have on property values. The underlying zoning allows for industrial uses. Would an industrial use have a negative impact on property value?
Well, it would depend on what's presented to the board and how, how the residents would respond to that, in my opinion. For example, when I live next to Fitzpatrick Container, that...
Mr. Hankins, we're...
Well, I know, I'm, I'm trying to answer. Would I...
If this were, he was asked a question, doesn't happen, I guess I'm very confused. He's answering the question. So counsel opened the door. I don't think you can cut off a witness as he's answering a question. That's my counsel.
He's asked a question, in his capacity as a qualified expert, and he's talking about where he lived previously.
He's asked a question by, by the attorney. You can't cut him off halfway.
The question was, does industrial use have a negative impact on property values?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I'm asking.
I, I've seen that personally. As I said, I lived in the development where across the street, Ms. McLean, you live near a stone crushing business, and there was, there were a lot of noise from that.
Mr. McLean, these personal residents are not relevant.
My apologies. My point is, how was...
I, I don't have any further questions. That's it.
I have freedom.
It's not, it's not your chance to leave right now. Mr. Ms. Devlin, do you have any questions? Mr. Benedetto, do you have any questions?
None.
Mr. Griffith, do you have any questions?
I have no questions for this witness.
To clarify, the proposal, this is not a park, right? Okay. Okay. And...
I shouldn't say a townhouse community. It's like a... I'm not, so there's how many units here? 60?
Mr. Hankins, you're testifying.
Question, the, sorry. Counsel made analogy to a park, and this, this is not a park, correct?
It's not a park. That's correct.
The board made analogy to a park. So I'm asking, so not a park, correct?
That's correct.
Now, you, were you here to hear Teresa testify previously?
Yes, I was sitting right there.
Now, Teresa testified previously to her proximity to this development.
Yes.
You heard that testimony?
Yes.
Okay. So if Teresa decides, I want to sell my home, she hires you as her Realtor, correct?
Yes.
That's something happens all the time. People hire you. There was, there was endless questioning on, on the nuances of, of his knowledge of value and not value. I'm allowed to walk through, he's been qualified as an expert. I can walk through. I, I'm, I obviously object to that, sustain. No further questions. Thank you. I have one more witness. We'll be, we'll close.
Your final witness.
Okay. My excuse. Deborah Worsen, she has been a, she's a broker. She has her own brokerage here in this community. She will also corroborate testimony on the reduction in property values that this proposal will have to all of you and your entire community. So that's, that's what, that's her purported testimony. The same analysis.
Do you think it's cumulative?
I don't think it's cumulative, because I, I think we have two distinct real estate professionals both testifying. I mean, if, if the board would like to, and she does have a commercial...
Offering different evidence to different...
No, she's going to talk about her experience enlisting property in this community as a broker owning her own firm, and the impact that this kind of development would have on property values, which, again, is back to the original analysis, which is relevant on suitability.
Papa, what I'm struggling with, it sounds like you testified in a public conference.
That's what, it appears to me that way as well.
If it's redundant, and the board would like to cede the point, what we could do is, if counsel would see that, we could say that this individual, who's also a real estate broker, will also testify that, in her expert opinion, property values will be reduced with this proposal. We can cede that point if you'd like.
Does she have any direct experience in affordable housing, in development?
Again, she has experience listing property. People come to realis, well, hold on, hold on, you're not, yeah. So any real estate agent or broker, people come to them saying, hey, what should I list my property for? Location, location, where is it located? She will also testify that a property located in close proximity to this type of development would negatively impact that. That's, that's what she will testify to, if the board, board can decide if they're interested in that.
That would be predicated on her experience actually listing properties near this type of program.
It would be...
Otherwise, it's just, you know, not expert testimony.
No, it is, because she's a real estate professional, so...
Correct. But, but much like your last witness that, you know, opined that property values would, you know, plummet with this type of program, he was unable to cite any experience of that actually happening in his own, in his own listing with his own clients. So I guess our question is whether or not this witness has any, has any experience, whether it's commercial or residential, listing and valuing properties near this type of project? Not just, do I have experience in real estate? Do I have experience listing properties? And have they been impacted by this type of project?
Well, I believe, again, we can, we'll be reading the transcript, you can, when we see what Fred talked about, but he was, he did testify, he listed properties near apartment complexes in large building. Now, again, may not necessarily be the exact, this exact same program. What we're saying is, this particular type of development, not necessarily the affordability issue, but just a large development that has, you know, multiple 60 units, something along those lines, would have an impact on property value versus not.
Mr. Papa, you elected to qualify Mr. Hankins as a real estate and land valuation expert. It sounds like you're attempting to qualify additional experts to testify to the same thing.
Yes.
On that basis, I'm going to deny your request to qualify a second expert.
That's fine. We'll mark for the record an injection to that lack of qualification and the lack of wanting to hear from people in the community. Thank you.
Do you have any other witnesses to offer that, or...
Lauren, if I may, I would say that there is a public comment portion, that certainly if members of the community, and I'm sure there's some wish to express their opinion on it, your client, you're, the witness that you wanted to put forth as an expert that was rejected certainly has the opportunity, so it's not accurate to say we're not interested in hearing from members of the public. Thank you, Mr. Papa.
We'll be there in, I suspect, very shortly. Mr. Griffith, do you have any witnesses or evidence to offer this evening as a party to this matter?
That's what I'm testing for tonight.
Mr. Papa?
I don't have anything further.
Ms. Devlin, anything further from you? Again, everyone will have the opportunity to make public comments. No, I do not. Mr. Benedetto?
No.
Okay. Mr. Papa? And Mr. Griffith, anything further? Mr. Papa, he, Mr. Benedetto already spoke. You can just go to, I'm just directing you to the microphone again.
I have no more. No questions?
No questions?
We just had, again, reserved, we just had a brief argument earlier, so counsel.
This would be the time.
Thank you, I'd like to thank the board for their patience, and these hearings are extremely intense, extremely. They're stressful, they're hard, and it's a challenge, it's hard to do this, so I appreciate the work you're doing here. If it would please the board, you know, I represent Teresa, the appellant. And the reason Teresa and similar folks like her in this community are opposed to this, opposed to this particular development, is twofold from a legal perspective. Again, this particular ordinance sets up a burden shifting apparatus whereby the applicant has to come forth and prove affirmatively that this particular use, and it's a large use, it's a big use, it's a different use, it's a use that does not exist right now, that this particular use is suitable within the existing zoning plan, is suitable within the existing community, is not against the public interest. And they have to prove that with credible evidence. So we believe that based upon the testimony that was submitted, they have not met that burden from a conditional use perspective. If you recall, we have, we really have no actual testimony on suitability from a zoning perspective. There was testimony given by the individual, I believe Mr. Gibbons. But our contention is that Mr. Gibbons, I'm sure is a very qualified engineer, I'm sure he does great work, but he's not a land use planner from which the board can accept that kind of opinion on suitability. So we believe from a conditional use perspective, applicant has not met the burden. But from a, from a bigger picture perspective, we believe that the ordinance itself, I just don't think there's any mystery here, that this ordinance appears to have been crafted for this particular development, and with this particular development in mind. And it appears to me that the board and the community, regard to this ordinance, now this application, has sort of been laser focused in focusing on this without looking at the community as a whole, without looking at the community perspective. I understand this went through planning, but we don't believe that the board comprehensively looked at the community in proposing this. And there are a few lines of legal authority, very briefly, that I think are just kind of spot on here. This is the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court. It says, "When a governing body puts on blinders and combines its vision to just one isolated place or problem within the community, disregarding a community-wide perspective, that body is not engaged in law zoning." Why is that unlawful? It's called spot zoning. It's a violation of both Pennsylvania and the United States constitutions. And it's well-settled law that an ordinance cannot create an island of more or less restrictive use within a district zone or a different use or uses, where there's no differentiating factors between this island and everywhere else. So, I mean, this community has, I believe, eight residential zones. I don't believe there is a great need for more residential zones. And when this community was crafted, this is industrial. And now we're placing a zone that historically has nothing to do with anything industrial on top of this as an overlay. And we think that sort of, kind of, not really kind of, but does make the current zoning scheme and plan completely incoherent and nonsensical. Because, as was referenced by Teresa, if another developer comes in and wants to put something similar somewhere else, there's not really, there's certainly a precedential issue that would kick in, I think, for this community, that would say that we just carved out a special little place because we like this proposal. This proposal could be great, it's just, you just can't do that from a zoning perspective. So, you know, we do believe that this ordinance, as well intentioned and as well purposed and as heartfelt as it might be, just can't hold water constitutionally. And again, another just brief quote is the court held, this is again, the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court, that since the land rezon had not been selected because of its attributes, but because of the identity of its owner, that was spot zoning. So that's what spot zoning is. It's, you're saying that, I'm going to grab a piece of a community, and I'm going to remake it, I think I got a really good idea to take over. But the problem is, is that everybody else has bought into this community. And they paid with their property values, they pay with their property taxes, they pay into this, and they're relying upon the municipality, they're relying upon the folks that they vote for to say, hey, we all bought into this zoning plan. I know lots of you probably live in R1, R2, all the various residential districts, there's a. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, there's a lot of things that they can't do with their property. Can't do a lot of things if you're in an R1. Lots of things you can't do in an R2. And they live with that, and they take that restriction because they feel that's in the best interest of everybody. We're all playing by the same rules, we're all under the same plan. And that's the thing that spot zoning, and all the doctrine of spot zoning that's developed through decades and decades of Pennsylvania law has said. And again, I just, and again, I don't doubt that the intentions of folks here, I don't doubt that this could be a great proposal, but I think just constitutionally, you can't do it. So I don't believe that this use can stand, I don't believe they passed the conditional use standard that the board did set up under this ordinance. And we also do believe that the ordinance is unconstitutional, spot zoning. And that's all, but we thank you for your attention.
Everybody, again, the hour is late, if we can, we can. Circummit, do you have anything you would like to comment before we move on to public comment?
Obviously, we disagree, but nothing further.
Mr. Griffith, I don't believe I asked you to have anything further to say.
I have nothing yet.
We do have a public comment lineup sheet for this evening's hearing. There are some people that have spoken, including Mr. Papa, who is also listed, I assume we can cross you off the list. Is there anyone that has not signed up on the public comment sheet that would like to add their name? I ask. All right, so it would be appropriate to open the public comments. And again, given the late hour, we would ask that people, obviously, the board is here to hear everyone, but everybody, try to be mindful.
Okay, up first for public comment, we have Joanne Mahoney.
I wrote this before this meeting, so none of my comments reflect directly this meeting, just so you know. My name is Joanne Mahoney, I live in Upper Glenada, I'm a resident. So this is extremely important to me, and I have a huge invested interest. I've lived here since 2013, I've been a homeowner in this township since 2014. Just want to know a little bit about my background, because I think it's important. I want to, I guess, also upfront, announce my support for this, for this development, because I think it's extremely important to the community. And just, I want to explain why. In 1987, my fiance, way back in 1987, my then fiance and I bought our first home in Lansdale Borough in, near Oak Park Elementary School, if you know the area. That's extremely, it was affordable, we bought the house for about eighty-two thousand dollars. It's a three-bedroom, one-bath house, about twelve hundred square feet. That is not a large house, that is not a large investment, and it's a great starter home, they still are over there. Those homes, if you're familiar with the area, is probably about a half a mile from a very heavy industrial area over by Eighth Street off of Valley Port Road. Anyway, we lived there very happily. Our mortgage, well, we made probably combined income, let's say around eighty thousand dollars, maybe not, maybe less, I don't remember. We paid ninety-two thousand dollars for it, and if you think now, those type of comparisons don't exist. Because our incomes were kind of, sort of similar to the purchase price of the house. Nobody makes a combination of what a house costs now. Housing affordability is totally ridiculous, if you think about what it was then. Five years later, because the, we, you know, we were living within our means, you know, saving what we could, five years later, we moved up, purchased another home, had a new house built in Hatfield Township for a lot more, and we were given that opportunity. We were given that opportunity by living in a community like, like there in Oak Park, because the house was affordable. We could afford it, we could save, and that type of situation does not exist now. We need to give more people that opportunity to quote unquote, "live the American dream," because that is what it is. The ability to move up by that additional house five years later does, is that. That's the definition of the American dream. Development like this, with, although it's rentals, the rentals would be affordable, the people would be able to live within their means, be able to save and give back the community, just like that. And hopefully then buy a home within the community. And that, I mean, that's the whole point. So that's really why I'm really for this, because the concept of affordability. Okay? And what I'm really saying now, if you think about rents, rents in commercial areas, they're two thousand dollars. That's a mortgage. People can't afford to do anything else other than pay the rent. Because you can't save anything when your rental, your rent is, it's the same amount of money as mortgage, so you can't get out of it. So anyway, I have, I want to state my support for this project, it's very important, I'm a resident of this community, and I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. I also just want to point out, Joanne, you did not go over the time, but I don't think I mentioned this, but we're limiting the comments to five minutes. No, 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 you did fine, I just want to make sure that, I don't think I said that, so I want to make sure that if someone does go over that, we will let you know. Nope, nope. Mike Hayes?
Good evening, everybody, thank you. My name is Mike Hayes, that's spelled H-A-Y-S. I am the director of the Montco Thirty Percent Project, and for the record, a resident of Pottstown, proud new homeowner. Five to ten years from now, after Cornerstone at Pembroke has long since been built, people will wonder what this fracas was all about. It will be a tremendous asset for the North Penn community. At the core of the opposition's campaign is the question of who will live at the Cornerstone at Pembroke. Right around Halloween, you see these postcards, sometimes plastered on your mailboxes. But the future, future residents are really just regular people. For people like my dad, who grew up near Sheltonham, just outside of Philadelphia, he helped build this county's residential development as a Finnish carpenter for over thirty years. My mom, a native of Glenside, drove school buses for first student in the Upper Dublin School District. As they both approached retirement age, they fell on difficult times as business slowed for my dad. They moved to a mobile home park in Hatfield about ten years ago. Of course, they desired something better than that, and over the summer, my parents moved to a development in the state of Delaware, very similar to the Cornerstone at Pembroke. They met that sixty percent AMI requirement, they have money left over now after paying the rent, spend in town on restaurants, trips, and other small luxuries that support the local economy. This development has the potential to transform the lives of sixty individuals and families. If you still don't believe me, I saved my mom's voicemail from the day she moved in. She said, "It was the best day ever, it's just beautiful, it's outstanding, there's landscaping, I have a balcony, right now I'm looking at a pool." I hear, I heard seagulls today. Dad and I are just beside ourselves, we're just tickled pink. "Oh my God, the clubhouse is just outstanding, they have a coffee bar, they have a gym for my dad, they have a pathway all around, all the way around the place. This is retirement, this is beauty," she said. "We are thrilled, they worked their tails off, and they now have something that they're proud of, a safe place to live." A little bit earlier this month, we had an election in Pennsylvania. Congratulations to Commissioners Hall and McNaney on your reelection. From what I had, from what I understood, this was an issue that was on the ballot. It's moments like these, we have to remind ourselves about why we have local government. It would be super inefficient if residents on an individual basis tried to plow their roads or bust their kids to school. Certain public services are best accomplished through pooling our resources together. Housing is another public good, in my opinion, that may be best delivered through our collective efforts just like this one. North Penn is a wonderful, welcoming community, and I hope more people get to experience that while providing essential services to the local economy. Please vote yes tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have Teresa Price.
Hi, I'm Teresa Price, I am within five hundred feet of this project. First of all, I really object to people who don't live in this area, who will not be directly impacted by this development. Speaking positively how it's going to be great and it's going to, you are not going to be directly affected by this. And those of us who will be have a very different opinion. Correct me if I'm wrong, this was not on the ballot. But we are speaking from our hearts, because we will be directly impacted by this, and we are very concerned. I did spend my time finding your other property, and I'm going to do my research to find out in those communities, how this property affect, how these developments affect the people. We have been following this project for a long time, one question I do have for the commissioners, have any of you visited their other property? Have you actually gone there unannounced, like, because all these pictures are very nice? How well do they keep up their property? How well do they follow up on their tenants? Are the properties still looking in the same condition as the pictures that you see online? Have you done that? Have you done your due diligence to make sure that what you're saying and what they're presenting to you is true? I would like to know that, and I would probably go out there myself and visit. Because they're all in New Jersey, and I guess this is their first attempt to put a property in Pennsylvania. I am still very concerned, like I said, this is in my backyard, and I'm just very concerned, and I'm against the project.
Thank you. Next up, we have Donald Ham, sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly. Okay, Donald. Okay, next up, we have Eileen Rogers. Okay, next up. Kristy, Kristen, I'm sorry, D. Dominic? Got it.
If everybody that's coming up to the podium could just make sure you spell your last name for the.
Absolutely, you're doing a great job. D. Dominic, D.I.D.O.M.I.N.I.C.K. Okay, good evening. Thank you for the chance to speak. I'm here in strong support of the Cornerstone at Pembroke. I'm a social worker and executive director for the Bucksmont Collaborative, a nonprofit that among a lot of other things, advocates for attainable housing. But I'm really speaking tonight as a neighbor who cares deeply about this community. For a little over ten years, I lived and worked in Lansdale, about ten minutes from where this development could be built, and I just loved being in this community. Ultimately, my family moved, because, not that we wanted to, but we couldn't find a home in this area that we could afford as our family grew. And even after we moved, we loved it so much that we drove all the way to send our two young children to a daycare in this region, because the childcare workers had become like trusted family to us. And when I look at these townhomes, they could be their home, right? I want the people who cared so deeply for our kids, as well as the teachers, the nurses, the firefighters, and other essential workers who keep this community going, to be able to live and work with us. For me, it's not about abstract units, it's about folks who could be our neighbor. You know, the preschool aide who knows every child's favorite book, right? The night shift nurse who, when you show up, gets you through the worst hours. The firefighter who shows up when seconds matter, they should be able to live where they serve. And honestly, to. And honestly, to live with neighbors who care so passionately about their neighborhood that they step up to the mic. And even though I might disagree with you, I was so touched by what I heard tonight. Mr. Vendetta, your care for people and wanting them to have, breathe from garbage, that doesn't have flooding, like, I heard that. And I would want someone who moves in there to have a neighbor like you, or Ms. Devlin, who's so curious and caring about what this project will look like. These are neighbors who step up and even though we have different points of view tonight, I was so pleased to hear your perspective and to know that folks who come into these units will stand with a community who cares about Upper Gwinnett. And from my work, I know that we need more attainable homes, right? In Upper Gwinnett and across Montgomery County. Right now, forty-six percent of renters here in Upper Gwinnett and nearly half across Montco are paying over thirty percent of their income just on rent, so they're cost burdened. And I imagine what families could invest in, childcare, local businesses, and savings, if they weren't forced to spend so much just to put a roof over their head. So please say yes. So the people who support Upper Gwinnett can afford to live and invest in Upper Gwinnett. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Carl Smith.
My name is Carl Smith. I am a longtime resident here in Upper Gwinnett. I live at eight fifteen McIntosh Way since nineteen ninety-two. As a taxpaying citizen, I am compelled by my conscience to speak about this issue tonight. It's long been said and correctly so that silence is complicity. And frankly, I have zero interest, motivation, or desire to be complicit in this illegal and unconstitutional spot zoning that this board is trusting upon. A bipartisan coalition of disaffected Upper Gwinnett citizens gathered here tonight and watching it help. Despite the utter chaos and dysfunction we've both witnessed and experienced in large cities like nearby Philadelphia, unbelievably, there is now a widespread and concerted push to urbanize the suburbs. A push to replicate what clearly did not work in our cities and bring it right here to our suburbs. In plain words, board is focused on instituting right here in Upper Gwinnett Township the very failed policies and programs that destroyed Philadelphia. Case in point, years ago, high-density government subsidized housing projects ruined the once charming city neighborhoods. And in the process, violated the dignity of individuals and working families. Meanwhile, we're being told that the high-density housing project that you're trying to propel forward illegally and unconstitutionally in tonight's conditional use hearing will somehow improve the lives of Upper Gwinnett residents when time and time again, such living spaces ended up hurting the very people they were intended to help.
Thank you, Carl. Next up, we have Tom Price.
Hi, my name is Thomas Price at three sixty Farm Lane in the Gwinnett Woods Condominium Association. I've heard a lot of different adjectives used to describe this project. Some of them are low-income, sod-sodized, affordable for police service workers, nurses, et cetera. I don't know whether that's an appropriate description of the project or whether it's a misrepresentation of this one living. I guess the bottom line for me and for other senior citizens is, what is the affordability going to be for us? What does exactly subsidized mean? I know the developers aren't interested in losing money. So where does, where does the difference between fair market value for these rental units and the amount of money that the residents will pay? Where is that value? Where is that number? Have you figured it out? And who's going to pay for it? Residents of our community? Our senior citizens who run a fixed income? Where do we draw the line? Their claims about living too far from our community? How do we guarantee that those who reside in the new community live within a close proximity to their work? How do we guarantee that the people who are going to be renting there conform to the schedule that was presented, with we have so many units for this income level and other like income level and so forth? How do you, who polices that? There are going to be costs to maintain the community. Is that borne only by the developer? Or is that passed along to us as taxpayers? A lot of these questions are very important. The board sitting up here refused to spend some money to assist Gwinnett Woods Condominium Association with the culvert issue that we had, to redirect public water through the culverts that went underneath Farm Lane in our community. The cost was originally projected to be in the order of four hundred thousand. The bids were accepted at two hundred and fifty. Since the board wouldn't contribute anything toward the repairs there, we deviated that amount by the hundred and four residences in the community, which came out to about twenty-two hundred and forty-four dollars per unit. Doesn't sound like a lot of money, but when you're on a fixed income, that kind of money is important. Some of our residents had to pay on a time schedule. And that's not really a good way to go. So what happens to us? You're going to have a senior citizens' housing project in addition to this if it goes through? I don't know the answer to this question. But unlike the culvert repair, which was a one-time issue, this new community is going to require support by the taxpayers forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Raabe, R-A-A-B-E. I live in Hatfield. The first thing I see when I walk into my house, after my dog bounding up to greet me, is a little dime store sign that says, "I'm so glad to be home. I want you to consider amidst all the fears we've been hearing tonight, fears that are completely understandable as we face change that we don't understand and can't quite comprehend. I want you to consider what it is like to not have a home to come home to. What is it like to not be able to say, 'I'm going home,' because you have no home?" That is the situation that many people who are facing the high rents that Kristen was talking about are in the predicament of having to consider. Eviction is a terrible process and almost impossible and impassable one for people to work through who have been, who have experienced that, being told that you must get out of the home you've been in because you can't afford the rent. These kinds of projects bring hope, bring hope for the future, bring hope for communities, bring hope for all those who didn't have a pigment of that to grab onto beforehand. So I would, as a pastor, a retired pastor whose business is hope, I would prayerfully ask that we vote yes for this project and that the community can experience this hope that we would, we know that we have it in our hearts to offer to our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Charlene Flaherty.
Charlene Flaherty, that's F as in Frank, L-A-H-E-R-T-Y. I am a deputy within the Montgomery County Office of Housing and Community Development. And I think I might be able to answer some questions that you posed. It's not what I was going to speak about, but hopefully this is a little bit useful. I'm here to state that the county is very supportive of this project. And we've worked very closely with the developer. And we are investing two-point-six-two-five million dollars in the project. And that is from several different fund sources, several of them federal. So the ARP dollars, which are the American Rescue Plan Affordable Housing Trust Fund, housing reinvestment funds, and the HUD Home Investment Protection Dollars. So in investing that money into the project, we're able to relieve the debt burden, which means that the developer, the owner, can get the rents down on that project. So this is not public housing. There are no vouchers attached to this housing. But because of this investment of dollars from outside of the community, we're able to offer these lower rents. The other thing that comes, to be honest, along with these dollars, is the responsibility for us, for the developer, the folks that live there, for oversight. So we require inspections. We require monitoring. We're the folks that make sure that people are income-eligible, that the units are leased up, that the units continue to be operational in good order. So we do that in partnership with the developers, with the owners. And we have an interest in this property and properties all over Montgomery County. We know that these need to be beautiful and they need to enhance communities because we need more attainable housing. We don't have a whole lot of money to invest, but where we can do it, it makes a big difference. A little bit of money can go a long way. And I think it's an appropriate role for government and hopefully will relieve some of the anxieties or the questions that you might have about, about the housing.
Thank you. Next up, Dominic Frashella, Frashella?
I know. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for all your volunteer work and people who have taken the time to try and do something with really good intention and all this. We do have a heart for affordable housing, my family and I. It is a great need. So it's not that we don't support that concept. It's the solution by which it's being done here is where we have great concerns. I appreciate the woman who just spoke, like, thank you for that context. It helps a lot. But where we live on Jackson Street, we are sandwiched between apartments behind Burger King that are actually part of Lansdale. And then we have this in Upper Gwinnett happening five hundred feet the other way. And then we just had on State Street, a couple of years ago, a single lot that was turned into nine single homes crouched in. So we are feeling the pull. And personally, too, there, it's just in the culture when it comes to renting next door, you just don't know the renters that will, that will come in. And, you know, it could be one drunk family member that paints your porch white. And as, as people who live there don't know how to get the paint off, you know? And, and there's not the oversight around those kind of things. And that did happen next to us. Now, this is a managed property, so I understand that difference. And hopefully that, things like that won't happen. But, you know, two weeks after graduation or, you know, schooled that out, we were happy to suddenly have twelve kids that we never met before want to play basketball in our driveway and befriend our kids. So we welcome them and we look forward to those relationships. But I will say that half of them came from the apartments and the parents are nowhere, nowhere to be found. And half of those kids have, I feel like I've had to be the parent on the block to manage some of the reckless behavior, you know, things that have, of ours that have been broken intentionally, whatever, you know? And just, there, there is an energy in roughhousing that, you know, we need strong families, we need strong role models in these areas, we need people to stand up and so, and, and to help the community grow on a social level and, you know, to really make this a success. But I would say, you know, a big concern, too, is the managing of the zone, you know, of the zoning in the township and how it, I question the effectiveness, the efficiency, and the equitability of it. Because, you know, this is being put on ground that is open space when there's a, I see empty commercial buildings everywhere for lease. So I would like to see more of a repurposing of buildings like that where there's already cement and structure in place. How can they be repurposed for residential? I really get saddened to see more open land here. And, you know, those are, those are generally a lot of our comments. And ultimately, too, the comp values, that's a high concern. And the gentleman who just spoke about who's paying for these things, you know, when we're given federal funds, like, it's not free. Someone always pays. Federal funds are never free. So it's my kids that are going to be paying for that, it's the generations that pay for these things. So they have to be handled with not just free money, but like with responsibility. So those are the concerns that I have. And these are some of the things we're seeing impacting our street, we're feeling the crouch and the lack of oversight. And set up a basketball hoop, I'm sure the kids in the neighborhood will find it and they'll be at that property, people who live there and don't live there. So there needs to be strong management around that. And a greater concern about taking care of the zoning that's been laid out and administrating it in a way that meets the expectations of people who bought here years ago and maintaining those expectations as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I've got Amy Ryan Faga.
Hello, everyone. It's great to see so many concerned citizens here tonight taking part in our democratic process. My last name is Faga, F as in Frank, A-G-A. Thank you. I've lived in this community for thirty-two years and have been involved in many civic organizations. My career was as a public school teacher and I retired from North Wales Elementary about a mile from here. I invested in this community. While I was a teacher at North Wales Elementary, I knew a family who was housing insecure for months as they moved in with different family members and different friends. They were unable to pay their rent as the father was downsized and lost his job. As you can imagine, this was traumatic and difficult for the children. They didn't want to leave their school, their teachers, or their friends. I remember the hard times. I remember the mom telling me that the rent they paid was too much for them, they were overextended. But they wanted their kids to be in the North Penn School District, so they took the chance that their jobs would be secure. Unfortunately, one job was lost and the family had to move out. That family eventually moved away in search of more affordable housing. I am advocating for the Cornerstone at Penbrook to be built to give families more affordable housing choices in the North Penn School District. Two working parents deserve a chance to live in a nice community where they're not overextended financially, and their children deserve to attend a good public school. I urge you to see the big picture for the betterment of our community and vote yes. Let's set a great example for the rest of Montgomery County and for all of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Janice Lair.
Hello. My name's Catherine Craig and I'm a longtime resident of both North Wales Borough and then I had moved into Upper Gwinnett Township and I live on Clearbrook. Can you just say your last name? Sure. Craig, C-R-A-I-G. I had my first two sons, I have three sons altogether, they're all grown. My first two sons went to Penbrook, North Wales Elementary, and then Penbrook. My third son, big gap, he ended up going to Upper Gwinnett Elementary. And it was a big change. He also... He also, you know, attended the Pendale Middle School, which was a big change compared to Penbrook for my, for my other two sons. Okay, where am I getting at? I, I've seen, over 15 years I've been in my home, changes in this community. I'm sure all of you see the traffic violation on Summietown Pike, on Valley Forge Road. Traffic hours in the morning, in the afternoons, in the evenings. You're stuck at lights for a long period of time before you can get through. There's a lot of congestion. I can't imagine adding more fuel to the fire with more traffic congestion. Housing is good, but open spaces are good, too. In the community I live in, the deer which used to have long, big forests and trees to to live in, they are now living in neighbors' backyards, front yards. When you go to any, any work in the morning, you see them cuddled up under bushes in front of a house. And there's no room for nature anymore. We have to think about this as well. And the taxes, of course, I'm sure there'll be some kind of impact there. Can't highlight that. Property development is something we have to be very careful about. And give me a moment here. One of my other concerns is if this does go through, you were talking about having a manager there only during day hours. Most people probably work during the day. Children are at school during the day. And having lived with my brother for a long time after I had graduated college in Norristown, he was an apartment manager for a big community. He was there 24/7 to take care of what needed to be taken care of. And quite frankly, if this goes through, I think you need a 24-hour manager there and nothing less. I am concerned because also as a teacher, I know that Pendale Middle School is, the capacity is full. And if you're adding more homes in this community, that is going to also be an impact for the school and the teachers and all the residents. So these are the things I am sharing with you because they were concerns for me.
Thank you. And next up, Dennis Went.
Dennis Went, W E N D T, a 28-year resident of Upper Gwinnett Township. First of all, I don't think there's any person in this room who does not think they're trying to advocate what they think is the best for this community. Everyone here wants what's best for this community. And we're all, you know, passionate about that. Many people have said that's a great thing about this community. What I see in relation to this project is I see a property that's been an empty lot for 30 years, setting for sale for as long as I have lived in Upper Gwinnett Township. I see it in a pretty optimal location for this project. It's near the, it's got mass transit, it's walkable. When you get those bike lanes on Church Road, it's going to be bikeable, right? So, I acknowledge the traffic on Summietown Pike and Valley Forge, absolutely. But you don't see that same traffic on Church Road so much. And, and I worked on Church Road for about 10 of those 30 years. So optimal location near mass transit, and I see a need. I see a need for new housing. You can't turn on the news and not see a story about housing affordability. You see it every day you turn on the news. And I see a proposed solution. Nice development, no traffic impact according to the study. We heard from Chief Duffy previously. No crime impact observed in communities. I know from the Planning Commission, two of our Planning Commission members went to visit some of the Walters properties in New Jersey with no, and only had good things to say about it. The feedback they heard was only good. So I see no detrimental impact to the township. I might add, I was able to Google the National Association of Realtors, the effects of low-income housing and property value. That article, again, National Association of Realtors, said there was no negative impact and in some cases even positive impact. So, again, what I'm seeing is, is, you know, positive things. Yes, absolutely, there will be things to manage. I, I hear you. Many things Walters Group will be responsible for managing. And I hope you guys keep them honest in that respect. But I think this development can be a true benefit for the community by providing housing for young professionals, for young families. And I would advocate for its approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Fred Hankin.
Fred Hankin, Upper Gwinnett resident. First of all, I don't understand why I was denied party status. I've lived here 40 years. I probably have more invested in this township than many people. I hear all these people from different townships, they don't live here. I understand their passion. I'm a real estate agent. I work with people all the time that are struggling to make payments, trying to find a portable house. I totally get it. I volunteer my time in Norristown. I don't like to talk about it because what I do is what I do and I don't go around bragging or saying things about that. But I worked down at Brother House down on Green Street by the police station. You may have heard of a man that was found in a dumpster down there. I actually knew the man, he used to visit us. I'm very sympathetic to people that need housing and affordability. There's a lot of that going on. I'm very aware of that. I think the one thing we're missing here from most of the people talking is the fact that zoning is one of the most important responsibility of this Board of Commissioners. And this is why people move here is because of the zoning that we've had. My concern is approving this project is going, is going to be, is and will be considered spot zoning. If spot zoning is approved, this sets a precedent for other types of development that would not otherwise be approved, which could in fact lower values with, within our community. That's because 1500 Parkway was approved because of spot zoning. Other exceptions, the current zoning would need to be approved as well. Also, the argument given that a TOD for this area would be granted to allow residents, residents rather, of 1500 Parkway to have access to public transportation to get to and from work. Now we're hearing, I've heard this from many people tonight, that it's not, the public transportation factor doesn't really matter because this is, we're all talking about local residents, social workers, teachers, whatever, running these units. What is being near public transportation have anything to do with them? I'm, I'm really struggling with that. And I think the TOD overlay was just, just a way to get around that. I also wanted to mention that previously I was at a meeting where a representative of the Walters Group stated in a public meeting that referred to this project as a redistribution of power. And again, I'm not understanding why non-residents' opinions matter. They are not residents. They don't pay the taxes. They don't live here. We bought in this, in this township for a reason. And to go around and make up rules for spot zoning, in my opinion, is completely unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman in the blue shirt, the front row, yep, if you want to come up. I'm sorry, I don't have your name.
Jason Lanier, L A N I E R. I'm actually a resident in Lansdale Borough. And wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that were mentioned here regarding taxes. And North Penn School District has been raising our taxes a lot and they're going to continue to raise. I don't know if you guys know, they were, they were attempted to do a half a billion-dollar high school remodel. Now it's 250 or 260 million dollars. That sets a certain debt level that we are always going to be increasing taxes. On top of that, there's about 150 to 175 million dollars worth of updates of the rest of the schools. All this means, everyone who lives in this area, North Penn area, will see their taxes increase indefinitely to pay for this debt load that we're going to take on. This is close to three-quarters of a billion dollars in 30 years. That's how we are going to be out forever trying to pay this. The county saying that they're going to subsidize this. With what money? The county doesn't have money. The county takes our money and gives it, is redistributing it. This is, what's going to happen if the county doesn't have enough money? Are they going to raise our taxes more? Yeah, it's continually to pay for other people's housing. I know I pay a lot of taxes. I'm not seeing a good, a fair amount of money or return on my investment in taxes. But adding housing where we are subsidizing the living is only going to last as long as the taxes keep going up. Once, once that runs out, what's going to happen? Also wanted to bring up the fact that Walters Group is, are there lawsuits against the Walters Group in New Jersey? Because I understand the, what happened in New Jersey. It was required by the Supreme Court to put in affordable housing. And a lot of townships and a lot of municipalities were suing to prevent this from happening. And there's lawsuits, if I'm not mistaken, against this developer. I'm not, this is to say that anybody in here is, is not doing their job and they don't know what they're doing. It's just, this impacts people beyond just the, sort of the empathy of having affordable housing for people who need it. I got it. You want to reduce the price of housing? Reduce taxes. Reduce, our taxes are going to go up how much in Montgomery County? I read somewhere that they're looking at 9% increase? You've got to be kidding me. And this is somehow going, somehow if we pay more taxes, it's going to make housing affordable for 60 residents. Okay, the rest of us get screwed with that. We're just paying for them to live here. This isn't a good thing. And looking at the crime system, there's actually a study. And I, I'm going to pull it up here. You guys can look it up yourself. This is in the National Library of Medicine. This has to, the title of the study is, "Do Affordable Housing Projects Harm Suburban Communities? ?" question mark, "Crime, Property Values and Taxes." And this was actually focused in Mount Laurel, New Jersey. And you know what they found out? That the crime did go up. I don't know what, what they were talking about. It didn't skyrocket, but it did tick up. And then there was a question about the property values. Well, more urban areas in Mount Laurel, Laurel, New Jersey, it didn't, it actually had a, didn't affect at all. In some places, it actually made the increases in those housing in urban areas tick up a little bit. But in, in more suburban areas, no, it didn't. Didn't help. It didn't burden. And as a person who owns rental properties, I will tell you right now that if you go and look for properties to buy, you are trying to stay away from high-density housing or affordable housing or what have you. It makes it, it's not a place where you can, you can even attain the rents you want to take. So you, and the reason why rents are going up are primarily taxes. I know this. I can tell you for sure. Taxes are a big burden. So you want to make things more affordable, lower your taxes. Do less. Maintain the township. Do the things that are required. Infrastructure, clear the roads in the snow, fix the problems. But don't make political projects something and, and, and layer it into, well, we're just trying to be empathetic or, and we're just trying to be helpful to people who can't afford it. You're the cause of a lot of this. The rural townships and states and in the US government are causing this crisis. And this isn't a fix. This is a short-term, this, this might help 60 people. It's not going to help anybody else in this room. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Hello, my name is Deborah Worstall. W O R S T A L L. And I live on Gosling Drive, on the corner of Gosling and Maury Boulevard. I'm, I've been living here for 39 years. I purchased, my husband and I were very hardworking people. We moved from Flower Town and I've sold real, I'm, I have a real estate business. I sold real estate from Manny Young, Roxburgh, all the way down to, we lived in Flower Town. It was getting congested. The crime rate was going up. So my friend said, come, move here. When I first started in real estate, there were people that couldn't afford Plymouth, White Marsh. I would tell them to move to Upper Gwinnett and Hatfield. There was a lot of farmland up here and it was not that congested. I thought I was moving out of it. Well, I moved into it. My road now is like a speedway. In fact, I'm friendly with the police because I'm always calling them and telling them, come over, sit in front of my house. I'm sure you can get out. And they do this. Also, I have a girlfriend that moved to subsidize housing at Pheasant Run. My friend built that 50 years ago, beautiful apartment complex. Then it converted to low-income housing. She was robbed three times. She had her laundry stolen. There was a murder there. She was hacked on her computer. She had to move. She moved to Sourdine to another area. My son lives at the Silk Lots, which is right near this, on Line Street. He pays 2,300 a month. Their place has been vandalized. People have come into their building and they think they can play pool and enjoy the festivities. I also am aware that there's already, I don't know exactly how many, but it's a lot. There's something called sober houses in our area that are people, drug addicts, alcoholics, that are new in recovery and they need a place to live. There are several of those. I have actually had clients tell me, I'm not allowed to steer anybody, but they've told me I don't want to be near Pheasant Run. I don't want to be near an sober house. And the traffic, I, I mean, it's just absurd. People are going 60 miles an hour down my road now at night. And they even put up the little reflectors. Also, we already have 45 houses of mental, mentally challenged people in North Wales itself. I, Donna Mangle, she purposefully owns for the needy and she has 45 houses. Also, there's going to definitely be more traffic. And it's, our roads can't accommodate it. 25 years ago, I believe Bill Lawrence was the manager. They had to turn down a builder because it said the sewer system and the water facility was being overtaxed already. So it has to have an issue there. And I have sold many communities where they have homeowners associations. The homeowners association are people that live in that community and they're directors of the board. So I don't know, and I, I would be curious to know how much, there's always a fee for the homeowners association. What are these people going to pay each month, each year for the homeowners association? I don't, don't tell me you're going to have a phone number where you can call and something's going on. Something's going to be going on. And the other thing, I purchased my first commercial property next door to Wendy's and then two doors away, I purchased another one. Because of taxes, my profit is not great. I'm, I'm basically, I'm housing one family that would have been on the streets two years ago because they doubled the rent. They said they were going to renovate, they never did. Now I'm finding out why they got this place. But I was willing to give them a place to stay. I have great tenants, unfortunately. They're one of the ones that are giving me difficulty. And I love this community. When I moved here, I think schools were nine in. When I moved here, I think schools were nine in the state, number nine. I just looked, now they're 36.
Ma'am, it's been five minutes. Thank you.
Oh, I beg you not to vote for them.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back?
Evening. Michael Benkosky, B-E-N-C-O-S-K-Y. Lived here since 1979, was 29 years old when I bought the house here. Had a 9.5% mortgage rate, worked two jobs, 35, 45 years. One is a broker, a food broker for 45 years, the other for AMP, Great Atlantic and Pacific Tea Company, founded in 1859. I came up here from Lafayette Hill, where I resided previously, 29 years, and came to Upper Gwinnett Township because North Penn School District was a great school district to come to. Corpus Christi School here was very great. I have two boys, sent them to Corpus Christi, sent them to LC, and they're very successful now in life, very, very successful. I'm very proud of them, okay? I don't agree with subsidized housing. I think that it's very bad and all, because I work for, I still work to this day, being 76 years old, and I take care of my neighbors' properties, I take care of my street and all. So, I have houses, I had a farmhouse across the street from me, the township, where I agreed to tear that down, and they built five homes in there. And they are $750,000 to over a million and a half dollars. Beautiful homes. But then again, too, now that you have merc people using Broad Street all the time, I believe our township should invest in kind of speed bumps. Why speed bumps? You go to Court Corner, a Maxwell Place and Broad Street in the morning, and you look at all the children that are going to North Penn School District there. And the children from across the street from me in those large houses, I don't know what schools they go to, but the thing is, is that the value of children are going to make this world today, not me. I'm on my way out of here, okay? So, the thing is, is that I believe that busing, you know, the SEPTA system, I don't believe it's correct. I believe that people should earn their way in life and not just be giving it to them from our tax dollars, because in the Constitution, we're going against the subsidizing housing. We don't want it and all. And you want to change that spot, to spot zoning. I don't like spot zoning, and I don't think it should be accessible to our, our successful township, of which I take pride in living in. So, and I think a lot of people here do take pride in living in this township and all. So, I don't have anything else further to say, other than I like Debbie, her response there. And, you know, I known her, when I used to put a quarter on a pool table to play pool with her, back in the day, with a wooden nickel. So, it is what it is. So, she's a very successful person. Her husband played for the Eagles and all, so, you know, her dad, I'm sorry, and all. So, anyway, but I do believe that our township should really think about this project and really think deep into it, that you have hardworking people that have worked here. Rotelli had their house there, on Marsh Road there. Now you have a new development going up there and their houses are like a million dollars now, and that little development there, three or four houses there and all. So, I love this, I just don't want it to go to pot here. And subsidizing housing is not for this township. I think Lower Gwinnett Township is very nice, this one's nice, I like Upper Gwinnett and I love it here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I think we have one more. Mark?
Mark, M-A-R-K, last name Connelly, C-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y. And I live at 11 Carney, K-E-A-R-N-E-Y, Drive in Upper Gwinnett. So, I could discuss a couple of things up here, Madam Vice President. One thing I could discuss is the fact that, you know, one of the purposes of zoning under the Municipalities Planning Code is to ensure that municipalities adopt zoning ordinances which are generally consistent with municipality's comprehensive plan. And there's no doubt that this ordinance complies with the comprehensive plan. I mean, it was almost copied and pasted, the section regarding this type of zoning with the TOD2. So, that would obviously be a factor that would be put into consideration if someone were to review if this were spot zoning. And obviously, that particular factor I would look at and say, well, you know, it's part of the comprehensive plan. I could discuss, you know, there's been discussion about, you know, should we put this property in limited industrial areas? And I could discuss the fact that at the July 11th, 2022 meeting of this, of this board, there was a discussion of residential density impacts and recent zoning trends that Mr. Van Rieker gave before this board. And, and this is a memorandum that is available online, so if you want to go online, look at the agenda. One of the exhibits he had included pointed out that, I believe since 1980, 256.3 acres, which constitutes 1,336 units, have been converted from this type of zoning to some type of residential. I believe in one of the cases, it might have been technically, not industrial, but institutional however, you know, one of those is, for example, Gwinnett Reserve. I could, and obviously, this development is going to be significantly smaller with respect to units as compared to a number of the developments that were listed in that exhibit. I could discuss, for example, the fact that when we look at an article, "Effects of Concentrated LIHTC Development on Surrounding House Prices," and the DOI number for that is 10.1016/jh2022.101838. The fact that they found that, you know, the effect on property values is generally neutral to positive of these developments. But I think the thing that I want to focus on is the fact that, you know, I've lived here since 2017. I pay about $1,200 a month living Gwinnett Club, which is the similar density to the proposed development. There's not a place, you know, if someone, you know, a little bit younger than me wanted to buy this, in this township today, they wouldn't be able to. I mean, they just wouldn't be able to. I mean, you can't get an apartment for anywhere near there. And I know, you know, I genuinely don't know what people younger than me are going to do. I don't. And I think we, as a community, need to do something in order to be able to make housing more affordable for people. Because, you know, you're going to see a whole generation of people who aren't going to be able to afford to live in this township. That's just the reality. You know, if I were to sell today, I'd probably get maybe $100,000, $100,000 more than what I paid for the property. And I paid $134,900. I mean, these are just staggering numbers. So, I would encourage you all, you know, to keep all these facts in mind, and also, you know, look at the ordinance. Does this comply with the ordinance? And I think it does. So, I would encourage you to grant this conditional use. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Are there anybody else that wants to make a public comment that hasn't done so yet? If it, did you say it's a question? Okay, got it. Thank you.
I believe that public comment, evening, now concludes public hearing program.
I'll make that motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure, second.
Motion and a second. All approved? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, I, for the public hearing, I would like to make a motion to approve the conditional use for the Walters Group at 1500 Penbrook Parkway. Can I have a second? A motion and a second. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. So, you're up, I guess, Joe, on land development presentation.
Thank you.
Just like I did with the last item, I'm going to ask you to be mindful of the time. We can, we can, why don't we take two minutes while people are clearing out?
Got it. Two-minute break.
...
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000. Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And then lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November open invoices. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, will you please do the roll call?
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. McNaney?
Aye.
Mr. Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion, then, to approve Resolution 28-2025 for the preliminary and final land development for the Walters Group at 1500 Penbrook Parkway, subject to the conditions set forth in the resolution. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And to clarify, that resolution will be amended as we discuss.
Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're going to try and move immediately on if you would mind.
Quietly.
Very quietly, leaving the room.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 13. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items A through M. I have a motion. Can I have a second?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, will you please do the roll call?
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. McNaney?
Aye.
Mr. Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to number 14. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 26-2025, which provides for a $30,000 reduction in property owner's primary residence assessed value and computation of the township real estate tax for 2026. Can I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, will you please do the roll call?
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. McNaney?
Aye.
Mr. Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to number 14. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 26-2025, which provides for a $30,000 reduction in property owner's primary residence assessed value and computation of the township real estate tax for 2026. Can I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And then lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November open invoices. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, will you please do the roll call?
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. McNaney?
Aye.
Mr. Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the November paid invoices. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I believe that takes us to Craig in Public Works Park and Rec, unless Denise, did you have anything for public safety?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Craig, turning this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Agenda item 16, I am making a motion to approve change order number two for the Haynes Run Stream Bank restoration project for additional tree planting in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Deanna, will you please do the roll call?
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. McNaney?
Aye.
Mr. Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to number 14. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 26-2025, which provides for a $30,000 reduction in property owner's primary residence assessed value and computation of the township real estate tax for 2026. Can I have a second?[827.33]